Hi, this is Tina in the chamber. Can you hear me? If possible, I'd like to do a test with the planning staff.
Nope, I don't seem to be connected yet, Tina.
Counselor DeGenova, can you hear me? Counselor DeGenova, can you hear me?
Yes, Tina, can you hear me okay? Yes, Tina, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Yes, I can. Perfect. Perfect. Okay. Okay.
And I'm the female of the year. And I'm the female of the year. I'm on the same program as last night. I'm on the same program as last night.
Okay, so you're gonna stay on telephone for a while? Okay, so you're gonna stay on telephone for a while?
Until I get my kid to bed. Until I get my kid to bed. So yeah. So yeah. But I will be here the whole time. But I will be here the whole time.
Okay. Okay. I'm gonna try planning staff now. I'm gonna try planning staff now. They haven't responded. They haven't responded. Can planning staff hear me? Can planning staff hear me?
All ten here. All ten here. I can hear you. I can hear you. Thank you. Thank you.
Perfect. Perfect. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And... And...
There are definitely other planning staff that need the test too. There are definitely other planning staff that need the test too.
Okay. Okay. I think we're mostly gonna be starting with speakers, I think we're mostly gonna be starting with speakers, so we'll be okay for the first while. so we'll be okay for the first while. Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Kirby Young, I can see you. Counselor Kirby Young, I can see you. Do you want to... Do you want to...
Hi Tina. Hi Tina.
Hi. Hi.
I can see and hear you too. I can see and hear you too.
Perfect. Perfect. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks.
Denise, can you hear me?
Hi, this is planning staff. Can you hear us?
Hi, this is Tina in the chamber. Yes, we can. Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you very much.
Okay. Good test. Thank you.
Hi Tina, are you there?
Is that Denise?
Nope.
Hello. Hi.
It's Counselor Hardwick just checking in. You can hear me.
Perfect. Counselor Hardwick, we can see you and we can hear you really well. Thank you.
Counsel, please ensure your video is turned on for the purposes of this meeting. It is being convened by electronic means under ministerial order M192. And just here, people could check to make sure they're on mute. That would be great. Here's some background noise. Still hear background noise there. Somebody's phone going off. Thanks. So only counsel should have video enabled. Any staff or applicant should disable their video, and the clerks will check. That's just so that everybody has an equal chance to participate. If our connections, counsel connections are lost during the meeting, then we will take a recess until we get folks back online. And if you are going to leave the meeting, please let the clerk know. The live stream of this meeting has both audio and video. Video of council members speaking, presentations, amendments, and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. And you can listen to the proceedings via the live stream or the YouTube link, which will be tweeted out at Van City Clerk. Let's see. So I want to note that City of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, inclusion, including utmost respect for all genders. I remind counsel that when addressing speakers and staff, we avoid using gendered honorifics and will instead refer to the person by the first or last name or role or title. It's tricky to get that into practice, but I think counsel is doing a good job to date. So thanks so much for your efforts there. Lastly, following the updated guidance issued on February 5th, in-person participation with local government meetings and public hearings is not permitted under the provincial health order. So folks will be calling in by phone, and moderator will assist them. So clerks, go ahead with the roll call, please.
Yes. Mayor Stewart in the chair. Deputy Mayor Carr.
Here.
And Counselor DeGenova.
Present.
Counselor Frye.
Here.
Counselor Swanson. Counselor Swanson.
Here.
Counselor Hardwick.
Present.
Counselor Weeb.
Present.
Counselor Boyle.
Present.
Counselor Dominado. Counselor Bly.
Present.
Counselor Kirby Young.
Present.
The meeting has quorum. Mayor Stewart.
Thank you so much, clerks. We acknowledge first that we're on the traditional unceded territories of Musqueam, Squamish, and Salawituthe nations, and thank them for having care for these lands for time immemorial. Also want to take a moment to recognize the immense contributions to the City of Vancouver staff, who are working so hard every day in normal times and extra hard in these COVID times. Before I begin, there's some announcements. Speakers have five minutes to make their comments, and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations, and if they are resident of Vancouver. Speakers may speak only once and should follow along on Twitter, @VanCityClerk for updates, for progress, so they don't miss their turn. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted to our online web form at vancouver.ca-public-hearingcomments, and that link will also be tweeted out. And if you're gonna... If pre-registered speakers have slides, then there'll be a slight delay, and we'll help you through that. But it's helpful if you say next, so we can move slides. Our role here this evening is to be a quasi judicial body, which means that counsel is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of speakers. After hearing from speakers, counsel may: one, approve in principle the application; two, refuse the application; or three, defer the application for further consideration. So now we're gonna continue on with the rezoning application at West Fourth and Bellaclava Street. And just a reminder that we dealt with items one, two, one and two, on February 11th and 16th. Counsel received staff and applicant opening comments for item three and began hearing from the public, which will be continued last night and will continue this evening as well. So I believe we're starting with speaker number 41, Carol L.A. Smith. And counsel, I can hear some background noise there, so if you could just double-check that you're muted, that would be great. Thanks. And we're going to move to Carol L.A. Smith.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding that Speaker Carol Smith is not on the line right at the moment.
Okay. And that's kind of a good thing, because I forgot to turn on my panel. So I'm gonna do that quickly. And I don't have the list of speakers right in front of me, so if you could perhaps let me know what the next name is.
Absolutely. Number 42 is Helen McConnell.
Great. So we have Helen McConnell on the line? Helen McConnell?
It's the clerk here. Mayor Stewart, and I'm getting a message. There was a connection issue for Helen. Sorry about that. So we'll go to Anne Zhong, which is speaker number 43, and we can come back to 42 if Helen gets on.
Let's do that. Okay. Speaker number 43.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Thanks very much for calling in. You have up to five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and counsel. Thank you for your time and this opportunity to share my thoughts with you. My name is Anne Zhong. I live in Vancouver and am a young professional in my 30s, and I am a millennial. I live to the south of the proposed building and will be directly impacted by any building form that will be built at this location. First, I would like to make it clear that I am not opposed to development. I am opposed to inefficient, costly designs. And unfortunately, that puts me in opposition to this application. There are three points I would like to share with you tonight. My first point is that the proposed building has a number of design flaws that are not compatible with the neighborhood or with the objective of providing affordable housing. The proposed building has an inefficient building form. With only 16,000 rentable square feet in a 21,000-square-foot building, 25% of the space is dedicated to non-rentable space, contributing to an oversized building. The Bellaclava option, on the other hand, the design built in collaboration with respected urban designers and the applicant demonstrates a thoughtful, ground-oriented, missing-middle form of development that is economically feasible, a better fit, and is supported by the community. The treatment of green space on the site is also problematic. A sentiment brought up by the urban design panel The treatment of green space on the site is also problematic, a sentiment brought up by the Urban Design Panel and others. An Arborist Report written by Davy Tree has been submitted as part of this hearing that shows the applicant's arborist support was incorrect in its assessment of the danger to three mature cedar trees. I also note that the applicant has used the height estimate of 49 feet for these trees, when their height is probably closer to 80 feet. This discrepancy means that root radius cannot be correctly determined and casts further doubt that the correct assessment of these trees has been made by the applicant and city staff. In the staff reports, there is uncertainty about what effects the construction of a building of this size will have on the trees, which should be a major concern, given the importance of these valuable green assets to our city. This alone should be reason enough to reject this application and reassess. My second point is that all indications point to the proposed building being a highly profitable building with market rate luxury rental apartments with ocean views. I disagree with providing the applicant a $400,000 DCL waiver as a sweetener. Providing these types of benefits is not desirable or appropriate. The third and final point I would like to make is with regards to policy and how important it is for the city to provide leadership and a policy door for density, especially when there is strong support from the neighborhood. I have heard during the course of this hearing that there is no policy door for the Bellaclava option. However, I believe that the Bellaclava option could be submitted under MERC. Why not? The Bellaclava option fits better under the MERC guidelines in terms of neighborhood context and transitions to surrounding areas. And indeed, with lower construction costs resulting from a more efficient building form, it is a viable financial alternative capable of providing below-market units. I encourage council to explore creativity in this instance so that we can achieve a win-win solution that provides housing inventory while also addressing community concerns of massing setbacks, inadequate greenery, and shadowing. Tonight, Mayor and council, I am respectfully requesting that you reject this application and move to explore other options. Thank you.
Thanks so much. You have a question from councillor Fry. Councillor Fry, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. And quite briefly too, I'm just curious. I'm not, I'm not an architect, obviously, and I don't have a lot of insight into land economics and how construction pro formas and all those kinds of pieces work. And I voted against DCL waivers, which you referenced on a number of occasions. I have been supportive of these specific MERC DCL waiver projects because the, the amount that is being forgiven is actually going directly into the sort of vacancy controlled units. And, and so that means that they will not be subject to sort of market rates, but they'll rather be at a controlled rent level, which actually in the long range is, is a real sort of affordable housing asset. So I'm wondering if, if, if that has any bearing on your impression of this project, the fact that we're, we're actually securing truly affordable units in perpetuity relative to just building market.
Speaker?
Thank you councillor Fry for your question. Just to reiterate your saying, does the additional, so existing on the site today, there are six market rental units and the proposed option offers net eight. So I think that when you look at the fact that the additional 27 units are not at a moderate income rental unit and are in fact, you know, at market rates and they could be charged at, you know, luxury rental unit rates. The, the picture there is quite different.
I guess I'm, I'm working off the assumption and I should have been more clear that, you know, I've, I've been by the side. I haven't been inside, obviously, but I've seen the tarpaulins across the roofs. Imagine there's a significant amount of work that needs to be done to maintain these properties. And given that the outright zoning would allow for just knocking it down and building condos, do you see any merit in, in, in the idea of secured rentals that are vacancy controlled insofar as they're, those rents are tied to the unit? And they have to stay at a certain price point for some of them?
I think that looking under the Bellaclava option, which offers a viable alternative, where MERC units could certainly be looked at, would definitely be a, be an option.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
Yeah, I was just continuing along that same line of inquiry. So there's six affordable units there now. There will be eight affordable units there in a new building. And in exchange for really two extra units, and from what I just understood was said, there's a DCL waiver of $400,000. Is that accurate to your understanding?
That's correct, yeah.
And at any time, how do you respond to the fact that at any time, and really this could have happened over the last decade, that the, the property owner developer could have developed a four-story condo building without market rental in it? How do you respond to that?
I think that that was at the discretion of the, of the developer to, you know, provide at-market rental units. But I think that what the community is, is supportive of today is a, is the Bellaclava option, which offers, you know, rental housing that could be offered under the MERC program.
But interpreting other, the only reason not to do a four-story condo, luxury condo with ocean views, although I guess you're up two floors higher, you can get better views, would be for the, to make more money? Is that, would you interpret it the same way? Am I, I'm trying to wrap my head around what's going on here. So I'm, I thought you were quite articulate in the way that you were unpacking and dissecting this.
So, absolutely. Oh, yeah, sorry.
No, I didn't mean to interrupt. I was worried you dropped off there.
No, I'm still here. So, you know, my understanding is that the developer has had problems with, you know, coordinating with the City of Vancouver to take a look at what policy options there are to date. And, you know, I know that jointly the developer and the community is, you know, have been looking at what types of forms of development. Now, when we look at the Bellaclava option versus, you know, the proposed development before you today, you're looking at two very different building forms. One is kind of a, a large tower form that has been shrunken down. And when you take a look at a building like that, then there, there are inefficiencies in the design, which leads to less FSR versus the Bellaclava type option, which creates and promotes more building efficiency. So, you know, I guess that you could extrapolate from that, that previously there wasn't that type of efficient building design forethought put into the process.
But the Bellaclava option, as you're describing it, for all intents and purposes, doesn't exist. We're looking, we're being looked at a comparison between what could, could be done under the existing zoning, which is a four-story Stratocondo versus a MERC six-story with eight subsidized or, or not, non-market rental. Where, what, what council has been doing from what I've been hearing is comparing the two and not really taking into consideration the Bellaclava model, although it is very interesting. What I'm trying to get at here is what's the upside for the developer to do this? And is it ultimately the only way, to your point, of solving the problem? Do you understand what I'm saying? I'm interested in the Bellaclava model, but I, I don't know that council's in a position to judge it right now.
So with the, with the current form of development that has been proposed, there are, there are many negative impacts that would be, that the building would, would represent. And I think on those merits alone, you know, I spoke to, I spoke to the, the large and mature cedar trees on the site. I spoke to the inefficiency of the current building and these types of things. And with that, you know, the current proposal should be, should be rejected.
Thank you very much. That's five minutes, councillor Hardwick, for your questions. I don't see any other questions for you, speaker. So thank you so much for calling in. And now we're going to move to speaker number 44, Vera Sheila Vizi.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councillors. My name is Sheila Vizi, and I had lived in Kits in the 1980s to 2000 in a three-story rental building. I oppose this project because neighborhood taxpayers are asked to subsidize rental units by way of waivers and exceptions. The developer will make a decent financial return on this project over the life of the building. It is not fair for the taxpayers of the neighborhood to have to pay the developer's way. The DC waivers will cost taxpayers between 400,000 to 600,000. The lack of community amenity contribution, CAC, will cost the neighborhood community. The CAC exemption for a few rental units should not only benefit the few renters at the expense of others living in the neighborhood community. Public benefits would be to maybe update the Kitsellano Library, which was built in 1963, to update the Kitsellano Community Centre, which was built in the 1950s, provide maybe some ice rinks in our, in our area, so we don't have to go too far. Swimming pools are not that plentiful. Lord Bingham is 1974. Carisdale Pool was 1955. So the point I'm making is that when was the last time the west side of Cambe received any new amenity buildings? So with this program, we're asking for a higher density of people to crowd the same existing amenities. So why waive the DCL and CACs when we need this money to grow our amenities if our objective is to densify the neighborhood? And another reason I oppose this project is because there are no three-bedroom apartments. I would think that the objective here is to vitalize and grow our neighborhood with children and adolescents. And a family of four cannot be accommodated in a building that, that has no three-bedroom units, only two. And, and I think that's a very important, that we, we look at inviting people into our, families into our community, not people who are going to come, be students, and then they move to the suburbia so they can grow their families there. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thanks so much for calling in this evening. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move to the next speaker. Thanks again for participating tonight. Council, we're on speaker number 45, Rebecca Hartley.
Hello.
Hi there. You have up to five minutes. Please go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Stewart and members of council. My name is Rebecca Hartley. I'm a resident of Vancouver, and I called in tonight to provide my support for the homes proposed for 3084 West Fourth Avenue and 2010 Bellaclava Street. I'm all familiar with this corner, as I spent many of my younger years going past it on my way to UBC every day. As I live relatively nearby, I was lucky enough to have a short commute to school and it probably gave me an advantage over my peers, but I had to endure a far longer daily journey. After all, it's hard to be young, going to school, working minimum wage, all to share a basement suite. That's an insult to the character of this community, as Kitsellano is the neighborhood of the Habitat Club's sixth forum, which was about providing not just soundless, but well-lit, suitable homes. Hope that the youth who line those beaches safe day that they knew some of their friends would value a style of building more than helping their fellow humans. I don't know the owner of this property, but my understanding is they're a local family. So maybe they were there that hot summer day. Either way, they clearly heard that lesson, as rather than selling this property like a lottery winning or hoarding it, they're opting to create a building that will live up to Kitsellano's legacy. The years of consultation have resulted in design that saves trees, creates a welcoming community, and allows real low and moderate income people to continue to cultivate home. I know there's some who are fearful that change will ruin Kits and in a lot of ways it already has. After all, time is unstoppable. The destruction of character homes for modern mansions paid for on the backs of basement suite renters is the definition of justification. However, a six-floor rental building is the answer. I've sat listening to a lot of people over these nights who are fearful and others that are outright greedy. I understand these desires, but we have to listen to our better angels. That's what Kitsellano was built on. They need to reach out to each other to compromise, to strive every day for a better future. You recognize that need for that with the approval of a five-floor building not 15 minutes away from this one, on a side street no less. How can we look forward to 2070, another 50 years from today, and say we must still limit what the last year to what was permitted 100 years ago? I'm not against strata housing, but my peers and family would struggle to purchase a home in Vancouver. Had I not bought one several years ago, I likely wouldn't be before you tonight either. How many voices would be here if it could be? What will our kids or grandkids say? Will they honor us like we do those who call upon inclusive Vancouver on the beaches of Jericho? Or will they look back and curse our shortsightedness? I want my family and friends to have a future here. We all stand with the values of Kits and the Habitat Forum and support these homes. I hope you do as well. Thank you.
Thanks so much for calling in. I'm just checking. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Thanks again though for participating. We have, thank you. We have number 46, Daniel Oleksiak. Thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here, and I understand that the speaker has withdrawn.
Thanks very much. We're on the 47, Audrey Demos.
The clerk here again, Mayor Stewart, and I understand this person is, speaker is not on the line.
Thanks. 48, Wendy Waters.
Okay. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks very much. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Okay, thanks. So my name is Wendy Waters, and I'm here to share my support for this project. I do know the area well. I lived one block away in a basement suite at Third and Bellaclava while I attended UBC in the early 1990s. And I also grew up not far from here. I went to Carnarvon Elementary that was, that's at 16th and Bellaclava. And Kitsellano back then was a very affordable, it was an eclectic neighborhood. It was full of immigrants and artists and small business owners, and also teachers and government workers and university staff, a lot of people who can't afford Kitsellano today. And, you know, today you walk along Kits and Fourth Avenue and some of the, the really charming, you know, sort of hippie bakeries, we'll call them, and, you know, little stores, things like that are gone. And now we have, you know, global chains like Peloton in the area. So it's just, it's definitely an area that's changed. And it's an area that used to be about economic diversity as well as, you know, ethnic and cultural diversity. And I feel that's, that's been missing. And a lot of the reason for that is we haven't been adding housing in Kitsellano. I looked in this area on just the CMHC website to see if there'd been any new rental in recent years. And over 10 years, I found only 74 new starts for rental in this area. And yet, you know, the city of Vancouver and the region has grown in this time by, by several hundred thousand people. So Kitsellano hasn't been taking its share. And Kits desperately needs more housing. You know, when I returned from grad school in the US, I wanted to live in Kits again, but not in a basement, and there was nothing for me. Ended up in Markhol and then in East Van. I love East Van, but I also still love, love Kits or would love that there was, there'd be opportunities in Kitsellano, especially for people who live and work at places like UBC, as well as the hospital district and, and other places nearby. And we've heard, I think, in some of these, some of these meetings from some of the, you know, the businesses in the area that just can't find workers because there's no place for them to live. You know, as a citizen of Vancouver, I did vote for many of you, and I was really hoping you would lead on the housing file. And I know that's going to be making some tough decisions, but a lot of homeowners don't want to welcome newcomers. I said this area has hardly had any newcomers in recent years. As I said, this area's hardly had any newcomers in recent years. I think, uh, someone may have pointed out this out already, but it's eighty percent white in a region that's not eighty percent white, barely fifty percent white people in, uh, you know, in the Metro Vancouver area and the city of Vancouver. Um, and I think that's, you know, to me, that's concerning. And why is that? Well, because we don't welcome newcomers in Kitsalino. And this building is one that could. We need rental, we need more housing, and this building is, it's a very, I think it's a, it's a cute, small building on, uh, that makes good use of the site. It's on an archeryo where there already are other large buildings, so I don't think it, it, it seems out of place. And as I said, I used to live a block away and, and, you know, and know the area well. Um, one, you know, other thing to be thinking about is, you know, for council and making these tough decisions, there's going to be a lot of these to come. You know, this is, this is one rental building, but our region is going to need, you know, five hundred thousand dwelling units, according to Metro Vancouver, over the next nineteen years by twenty-fifty. And, you know, the city of Vancouver's twenty-five percent of, of the region, so that would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand units, and half of our citizens' rent. So, that's sixty-two thousand new rental units needed over the next nineteen years, or thirty-two hundred, just over thirty-two hundred a year. That's a lot of, a lot of rental housing. Kitsalino's going to need to take a share of it. It's five percent of the city, maybe it should take five percent of the new rental units needed. That would be a hundred and sixty-three rental units a year. And as I mentioned, Kitsalino has only been adding an average of seven and a half over the last ten years, so a total of seventy units in ten years. And, you know, there's probably many residents of Kitsalino that say that these added units should go somewhere else, but that doesn't really help with some other messages we want in Vancouver. You know, the mayor that started this evening talked about longstanding commitments to diversity, equity and inclusion. How is it about equity and inclusion if we allow a neighbourhood that is mostly one ethnic group, you know, Caucasian, to not allow newcomers who might be different from them to come into their neighbourhoods? So, and in addition, you know, they're maybe saying, well, why don't we build this housing on some brownfield or greenfield site? Not, the, the Metro Vancouver area really has many greenfield sites, but maybe there's some brownfield sites, but they're going to be further out. And we also, as a city, I, you know, successive councils have made a commitment to being a green city, uh, and being a city that's very proactive on, uh, the resistance and the prevention of some of the climate change. So, you know, this is just, this is one step in part of the solution, which is welcoming newcomers, welcoming diversity, welcoming some change, and welcoming some housing, including rental housing, to, uh, to our city and to some of our neighbourhoods that have been very static over the past, uh, few decades. So, I, I, as I said, I, I support this project. I think it works well in the neighbourhood, and it's one step for, for this council to, to start with the, the solutions that we need as a city, uh, and as a society. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. You have, uh, questions, uh, Councillor Hardwick, and then Councillor Kirby Young, Councillor Hardwick.
Yeah, um, actually, having listened to the speakers over the last couple of nights, there is quite a lot of diversity in, uh, just even looking at the surnames of the speakers. So, uh, I would suggest it's not as homogeneous as you're suggesting. But do you have an objection to other alternatives to this height and massing on the site? We've heard from quite a number of speakers that, uh, it's possible to accomplish, uh, the same, uh, within MERP guidelines, alternative forms for this particular site. Um, it, are, is the statement you're making generally about Kitsalino, uh, taking more density, or is, do you have any comments, uh, about looking at alternative, uh, forms and, and housing typologies on the site?
Well, well, this site, uh, you know, my understanding from listening to the, the opening comments from, uh, you know, um, from the, you know, the family that's had this, you know, they're looking for an efficient way to add as much housing as possible, um, that will support, you know, our need for rental housing. We only get a chance at, at some of these sites, you know, once in, uh, you know, fifty, seventy years, um, to, to add housing. So, I think, you know, that this form is a very efficient way to get us some more housing. Um, and, you know, also, they've been working at this for seven years, and this is, this is what we've been working towards, and, you know, you know, what they've been working towards. So, I think to, to say that we, uh, that we need a, um, a different form here, like just on this particular site, maybe not practical. I think maybe this other form that people seem interested in could be looked at, uh, you know, for other areas of Kitsalino. But I think today we're here to, to, to talk about, um, this one, uh, you know, this one particular project that's been seven years in the making, and, uh, I think that's...
Actually, we just heard that this has been a recent submission, but notwithstanding, um, I'd like to get, get back on, uh, my questions. So, um, and, and on the brownfield sites, there were several that were mentioned during this public hearing around, um, fallow, um, gas station sites in, in the, in the area. Um, so I'll just park and ask you, do you work in the real estate and property development industry?
Do I? Uh, yeah, I work for a company that, uh, that helps pension funds invest in, uh, real estate, including rental housing.
Thank you.
Councillor Kirby Young, up to five minutes.
Hi there. I just have a quick clarification question for you, and you had, um, I just didn't hear if you said that you used to live in Kits but you don't now, um, or are you still a neighbour, or have you had to relocate?
That's correct. So, I, I lived in Kits, so I grew up, uh, just, I guess, just outside of Kits, um, and then I lived at Third and Balaklava for two years in the early nineteen nineties in a basement suite. Uh, I then moved away, um, to go to grad school, and when I came back, I wanted to come back to Kits, but there was just nothing there other than these fairly dark, uh, basement suites, and ended up in Marple and then ended up in East Vancouver. And that's where I live now, is in East Vancouver.
Okay, and, um, you don't have to answer my questions, but I'm curious. Are, are you renting? And if a project, a building like this did go forward, is it somewhere that you would be able to consider?
Uh, I, I'm an owner actually now, but, uh, certainly a building like this would have been fantastic when, uh, you know, I was not ready to be an owner, and, uh, when I first, uh, you know, moved back to Vancouver, something like this would have been, would have been perfect.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Appreciate you speaking.
Thanks so much. Uh, that's it for questions. Uh, thank you, Speaker, for, uh, for calling in this evening. Councillor, we're moving on to Speaker number forty-nine, Matthew Carter. Matthew Carter, Speaker number forty-nine.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. We had, um, an indication that Speaker number forty-nine withdrew.
Okay, thank you very much. On to Speaker fifty, Stuart Smith. Stuart Smith, Speaker number fifty.
I'm also the clerk here, Mayor Stewart. I'm also hearing that Stuart Smith is not on the line.
Thanks. We have Owen Brady, Speaker number fifty-one.
I'm just getting a message, so it's the clerk here.
You sound like a clairvoyant or something.
No, we do not have Speaker number fifty-one, Owen Bradley, either.
Okay, let's try fifty-two, Kristi Wolf.
It's the, it's the clerk here, and also looking like a no-show.
Okay, thank you. Fifty-three, Sarah Steele.
Furthermore, I'm just double-checking, but looks like a no-show.
Okay, thanks. Speaker number fifty-four, Oliver South.
Starting to sound like I'm repeating myself, but appears to be a no-show, Mayor Stewart.
Thank you. Speaker number fifty-five, David Gardner.
I'm here.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. David Gardner. We've got up to, uh, five minutes whenever you're ready.
I am opposed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, I don't see any questions for, for you, so I'm going to move on. Uh, fifty-six, Yvonne Grommuller.
Now? Yvonne is coming.
Thank you.
Hi there.
Hi there, thanks for, uh, you have up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
And, uh, standing, uh, standing in for all these times. Anyways, I oppose your, your motion for the building. I would like, uh, Cameron to continue to live where he lives in peace. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, I don't see any questions for you, uh, so we're going to move on to the next speaker. Speaker number fifty-seven, Michael Silmont. Speaker number fifty-seven, Michael Silmont.
Mayor Stewart, the clerk here, I do not have Michael Silmont on the list.
Thank you. Fifty-eight, Jeff Garralis.
And again, the clerk here, I do not have Jeff Garras.
Thanks. We got fifty-nine, Speaker number fifty-nine, Eric Patel.
Likewise, the clerk here, we do not have Eric Patel.
Thank you. We have Speaker number sixty, Jenny Tan.
Yes, Jenny Tan should be on the list.
Thanks very much. Jenny Tan, you have up to five minutes whenever you're ready. Jenny Tan, Speaker number sixty.
Hi, Mayor Stewart, it's the clerk again, and apparently Jenny Tan is not on the line.
Okay, thank you. We have Speaker number sixty-one next, Eleanor Roberts. Eleanor Roberts, Speaker number sixty-one.
Mayor Stewart, I'm just double-checking.
Okay.
Fifty-nine has come on the line. Would you like to go back to fifty-nine?
Please do. Eric Patel, number fifty-nine, please go ahead.
Hi, uh, thanks for having me, and I wanted to start just by saying that I've been listening in these last several days, and I wanted to thank you and the council for, um, for anything else, just for your stamina, putting up with all this and, uh, listening to everybody night after night. It's very impressive, and, um, just as a citizen, I'm grateful, so thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to say thanks as well to Cameron Zucco, who I think has been, you know, taking his personal time to try to make the, uh, neighbourhood better, which I really appreciate. And as you probably can tell from that statement, I'm strongly opposed to the development. I think it's too high, uh, you know, we've talked about the six stories, it's right next door to bungalows that are one and a half stories, and that is really inappropriate. Um, the setback is too small, in my opinion, and it really, as others have commented, seems to be out of scale with the community. Um, and more than that, it's, it feels like a design without thought. I mean, the main thought is we can sell a lot of those really high-end condos at the top, um, but to, to really integrate it with the community and give something back to the community, it doesn't feel like enough thought has been given to that. And, um, a few meetings ago, Councillor Weave said, uh, said something about what he looks for, it was balance, buffer and creativity. And another councillor talked about neighbourliness, and I don't think this meets the mark on any of those items. And so we give up all of that, and for all that, all we get is a two measly additional rental homes, um, increase, and that just doesn't seem like an appropriate trade-off. And I'm, I'm also concerned about the process, from what I understand, although I wasn't personally involved, I understand that the city was involved in basically curtailing discussions that were working well between the developers and the neighbours, and that just doesn't seem right, and it makes us as neighbours question both city government and the role, and governance and the role of the planning department. Um, and I believe that the council has the ability to put that right, uh, with your decision on this. More broadly, um, I think probably all of us have, have observed that this area on Fourth West of McDonald for the next couple of blocks is really struggling to find its feet. I mean, I feel that it needs some form of revitalisation, totally in favour of development, I'm totally in favour of far more rental units in the area. But this one just doesn't meet the mark in terms of helping the community with that revitalisation. Uh, if you look along that corridor, um, there, there aren't many open spaces, but there are a few, you know, gaps that are just sitting there, like open wounds. Um, the longest lineups are for the cannabis stores and the liquor store, and there, yet there are, um, retailers that are really creative, you know, have useful things to, to offer the community, and many of them are really struggling. And, you know, there's a closed Starbucks on the corner, it just, it needs more than a soulless, big development that, you know, violates all of the zoning in the area. Um, you know, I think that what you're hearing from the community is an eagerness to pitch in and help find solution, and a feeling that the owners, the Millers, are a group that we can work with, and it sounds to me, you know, and again, not personally involved, as if the untimely intervention of the city has given rise to concern and distrust, and I think it would be, um, you know, an act of bad faith to approve this in the faith of, in the face of all that. So, I'm a, a big believer in the Balaklava option. I know it's not right for you here, but I think, um, give us a chance to do something right with this space, and I'm certain there would be solutions. Um, and with that, uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks so much. You do have some questions? Uh, Councillor Weave, followed by Councillor Kirby Young. Councillor Weave, up to five, please.
Yeah, um, my first question is, great that the neighbourhood's getting so involved, and I know that there's a lot of options moving forward, um, in the building paces to do a lot of the design work. What, what type of design elements would you like to see, um, recognising that the Millers are listening to us right now? So, what elements would you like to see in this building that would make it more palatable?
Yeah, well, well, you know, I'm not an expert, right? I'm just a, a citizen, excuse me, happens to live in the neighbourhood, so I don't know all of the aspects of that, but what I like is, um, things that have, uh, more character on the facings. I mean, downtown, there are some buildings where, um, the, the first floor is really done with a streetscape in mind and, and a kind of a, a homely feel, streetscape in mind, and then they set back to the upper stories to sort of give you that, that nice character, um, on the street itself. I feel like that's something, um, probably a little more in terms of, um, setback and what that can mean for greenery. Um, you know, beyond that, in terms of amenities, et cetera, I'm just not well-versed enough to comment intelligently, I apologize.
No, no, that's good to know. And I know that a lot of people have come forward and been talking about the Balaklava option, recognising that removes elevators and reduces accessibility. Do you think that living in place in Kitsalino and accessibility should be one of the concerns we're looking at when we, as council, look at these projects?
Uh, yeah, well, I, I, I think so. I mean, I would hope that there are options in terms of ground floor accessibility that, that would be viable there. In terms of, of that trade-off, I, I can't speak to it. I mean, in terms of what the demand is and, you know, what the, what the need is for elevator, elevators in terms of percentage of the population, et cetera, I'm just not familiar enough.
Yeah. Um, I really appreciate it. It's been really good to hear so many from the public. Thank you so much.
Sure, thank you.
Hello? Mayor, should I go ahead? I think you're muted.
Here I am, saying unmute, 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 that's me. Uh, so, Councillor Kirby Young, please go ahead, up to five.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thanks for being here, um, Mr. Patel. I just had a couple of quick clarifying questions. Um, you had mentioned, I think you said something along the lines of it felt like the design had been done with a view to selling higher-end condos, um, but I just want to clarify, you're aware that this is a, a hundred percent rental building, not a condo building, are you?
Um, I'm sorry, a hundred percent?
Yes, all rental units. I just wanted to confirm if you are aware of that or not.
I, I was not, no.
Okay, does that change your, um, opinion at all, knowing that it's not condos for sale, but it's thirty-five?
Every thirty-five, all of the, all of the thirty-five units are rental?
That's right. Thirty-five units of rental and eight, eight of those are moderate income units.
I see, I see, yeah. Um, probably not, given that it's, I, I mean, for me, rental speaks to that need for moderate income rental.
Okay, um, because I just wanted to confirm sort of the facts, um, here, because I think you also said you're gaining two units, but just the specifics of this building that are proposed are a total of thirty-five rental units, eight of moderate income, so...
Yeah, yeah, the, that's, I, um, the shorthand I've been using is, is rental. For me, it's about moderate to low-income rental, um, expanding that pool is, is important to me. Providing high-end rental, I, I don't believe is a, is a good move for the community, and I think it, you know, it's designed to benefit the people that build the building.
Okay, even if a quarter of the units are moderate income rental, you would still feel the same?
Um, oh, let's see, uh, well, yes, for a net gain of two rental units, absolutely, I feel the same.
On the moderate side, right?
That's correct, correct, yeah. Again, I'm using that as... That's correct, correct, yeah. Again, I'm using that as a shorthand. I apologize.
Okay, so you're most, just to reflect that back then, so I've got it clear, and I think I do. You're most concerned about moderate units, not about the overall number of rental units. You want moderates specifically.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, thank you for speaking.
Thanks so much. That's it for questions for you. So, thank you for calling in and sharing your views. And I'm going to move to the next speaker. Thanks again. Let's see here. We have, yes, go ahead, clerk.
Yeah, sorry for the interruption. Mayor Stewart, it's just been a little bit quick. So, we did have speaker number 57 and speaker number 58 come on the line, if you would like to go back to them.
No problem. We have 57, speaker number 57, Michael Silmont.
Yes, hello. Good evening. Can you hear me all okay?
Sure can, thanks. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Yes, good. Thank you very much, Mayor Stewart, and to the councillors as well. I'd like to thank everyone for their patience as they listen to all the perspectives, and I think, you know, I'd like to also echo the same sentiments of people who oppose this project that's currently in discussion. I've been a resident of Vancouver. I started as a renter in Kitzelano, just a few blocks away, and after many, many, many years, bought the cheapest house in Kitzelano, and we have affordable rental in our place as well, which I would hope one day the city will recognize all of the secondary suites that are existing in the areas affordable, that by comparison to what's being developed new today, really are. But specifically, I want to ask it for the mayor and the councillors who previously voted in favor of this project to be willing to reconsider and keep an open mind. I think the people who are opposing it are generally not adverse to development. What I'm hearing is, you know, that the FSR is too big for this particular property, and people are saying, "Look, we're looking for some consistency within the community character that's been established at three and a half to four stories all the way along West Fourth." And this part of West Fourth is, while it might be lacking in perhaps character of stories and so forth, it is extensively developed in a consistent manner at a certain height. And I don't see personally any reason why this site deserves special height and density allowances for this small location. And I think we also need to be reminded of ourselves at this time that there have been hundreds of recently added rental units on this very same 3,000 block, except on West Broadway. And with the extension of what's going with the Hollywood, and then ultimately what goes on in Alma, I feel that there is a disproportionate amount of development occurring for rental units in Kits as opposed to being shared across the city at large, which this is a city problem. So, you know, we've got a lot of greenfield on Broadway. There's a lot of single-story buildings that can be built and will be built, and not to mention the garrison. But for this particular area, there's a number of things in the proposal I find, I have issues with, which is I find it just too aggressive for the small site that it is, 71 by 104, and so in height and scale and footprint, we're effectively doubling the density of the floor space of what is allowed from the RM4 to the 1.45 to 2.95. And I'm not sure, other than having a couple of additional affordable rental units, why there would be such a permission given. This doesn't, you know, we're not benefiting off of profit. This isn't anything related to reconciliation. This is really a rental unit that many rental buildings are being built. So, why should this one deserve such an extensive exception? Obviously, whether the design of the building is poor or not is up to the individual, you know, call a box a box. But if it was a four-story box, I bet right now there would not be a lot of disagreement with it. So, I think we've got to look at the things like the setback relaxations that need to be, you know, we don't want narrow setbacks. We want to have a neighborly area. And certainly shadowing occurs. I heard a number of people from Santa Barbara, one gentleman specifically say it affects his patio. Well, it doesn't just affect his patio, it affects dozens of people's patios there. I personally went around the neighborhood when I heard about this. People signed letters. We generated about 80 letters and over 800 signatures opposed to this proposal. And I just want to be able to say something on behalf of all of those people who signed that and wrote personal letters who aren't being here this evening. And I don't think that should be ignored and just sort of say, "Well, that was last month." And, you know, that still holds true to this day. And we think if we can reduce things like height, but really keep them within the FSR, then everything else kind of strings to scale. And then in terms of the social equity issue, I think the project kind of failed the test for the neighborhood. The city is asking neighbors to accept unneighborly building in exchange for citywide benefit. And, you know, back to my comments that I was discussing on West Broadway, where I think there's been a large impact and a large load of Kitzelano is continuing to bear, which is acceptable in that location. This location on West Fourth is very small. We're not really getting a lot out of it. And that's just what I'd like to add this evening, and I'm sure everyone appreciates having an extra minute to go home earlier tonight. Thank you.
Thanks so much for your time this evening. Councillor Weave has a question for you. Councillor Weave?
Yeah, one of the things we keep hearing is that this isn't the right location. And I would agree. I think that Fourth and McDonald could have more density in other spots, but we're not the ones bringing the projects forward. We're not the ones that are determining what happens on each lot. And so, I'm wondering, recognizing that these developers come forward to us and as residents, how do you feel about us being able to look at this project on an individual basis?
Well, I think on an individual, well, I will turn that around to the same way that people who have developing on their own home. There's really very limited exceptions for individual bases, and that's why the city makes plans and puts zoning in place so that we follow that and create, you know, what I'd call consistent neighborhoods that people really enjoy. So, I don't see what the individual specific case for this property is, or why it justifies it. So, I believe that we have guidelines. I can tell you that the city has maintained extensive amounts of consistency in their RT6, 7, 8, all the different zonings that exist. And variances are minor, maybe 5% variances if you follow a character of the neighborhood. Well, this is not a character building. This is not benefiting, as I say, not-for-profits or any special needs groups. This is, I don't see why there should be an exception on this location. I'm sorry.
Oh, appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you. And that's it for questions. Thank you very much for calling in this evening, and I'm going to move to the next speaker. Clerks, who I think is, you said was number 58, Jeff Garrulous.
Hello.
Hi there. You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Okay, my name is Jeff Garrulous, and I oppose this project. I live up Fifth Avenue, approximately one-half block from the proposed development. The owner and the architect stated in a proposal that there's a shortage of rentals in the area. They stressed that they canvassed the area and found less than 6% of all accommodation is rental. This is not true, and they're misleading the mayor and council. A previous speaker reported his review of the true tax rules revealed that at least 50% of the residences in the area are rentals. It is said that the developers are being a philanthropist, trying to provide housing rather than capitalists trying to maximize profits. It also affects that there's much development planned coming up in the Jericho Lands Development that will provide a lot of needed rentals in the area. Other than that, this proposal does not meet the requirements nor the spirit of the MERP guidelines. It does not provide equal replacement rentals on either a bedroom or square footage basis. The developer expects a high variance for this project, setback variances, waived DCLs for this project, and in the end, there will be less affordable housing. This should require more from the development for these massive variances and waivers. The idea that this proposal provides affordable housing is somewhat ludicrous. A person living in a studio paying $1,200 a month is, it's out of reach for a working person at Tim Hortons or Starbucks or Safeways, and those are the kind of accommodations we need to support these people. What we desperately need is a proposal which addresses the need of low-income workers, not the need of high-income penthouse dwellers. Another problem with this development is the developer will start tearing, developers will start tearing down many three-story walk-ups, and small apartment blocks where they have precedent to build a six-story building is already in place. This will make the mayor and council complicit in rent evictions. Thank you for your time, and I would like to say that there's an election cycle coming up, and I think those who vote in favor of this proposal should run under the Development, Developers Party banner in the next civic election. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any questions for you, so I will move on to the next speaker. We've got next on the list, number 62, Kelly Talaiko, Tala-Yeko, Tala-Yeko. Sorry for that. Clerks?
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here.
And I butchered the name. It's Kelly Tala, Talaiko. Sorry.
No, no worries. I'm not saying that that speaker is on the line, but I I had understood that speaker number 60, did we already hear from Jenny Tan?
I don't believe so, so I'm happy to call Jenny Tan, speaker number 60.
Hello, mayor and council. Can you hear me?
We can. Up to five minutes, please.
Perfect. Thank you, mayor and council. Good evening. Good evening. My neighbor's on the call as well. My name is Jenny Tan. I'm in support of this project, and I've lived in the neighborhood for eight years. I'm excited. I'm really excited about this project, because I want to emphasize something that councillor Sarah Kirby Young brought up earlier, that this project is 35 rental units. That's 35 families. That's 35 families like mine, like yours, your children's, and your grandchildren. And I've heard many speakers over the last year talk about the difference between six to eight rental units, referring to rental units that are being rented out, houses that are currently there. And I can tell you that comparing rental units and houses that are going to be redeveloped or torn down to purpose-built rental is like comparing apples to oranges. In fact, it's like comparing frozen pizza from No Frills to handmade pizza at DND Double D Pizza, which is a restaurant in the neighborhood, because they're completely different things. I have lived in this house now, this house I'm living in, it's about, the owners are just waiting to tear it down, and I can tell you that there is no stability here, that there is absolutely no stability. You know, I know that I am about, I may get moved out at any time, because they are looking to sell and redevelop. And I want to talk, and so I want to strike that down here. It's not about six to eight rental units. It's about 35 units for families. And I've also heard many of my neighbors on the call talk about, "Well, this is rental for folks who are very well off." But let's remind ourselves here that there is a housing ladder here that is, that folks get displaced each way down. If folks who are able to afford those rents can't find those in the area, they will take apartments that are meant for folks that are a little lower down on the income scale. And those folks that are low down in income scale go down, so they downgrade from, say, buying to renting a nice place, renting to renting a basement suite. And maybe those folks end up not being able to find anything, and then end up having to sleep rough. So, as we add rental stock, this is great for the entire, for our neighborhood and the entire city. But I want to focus on our specific city here. This is good for us. We meet young families in our neighborhood. I think about all the elementary schools in the neighborhood and how much we all love having young kiddos in our neighborhood, how we love having kids laugh and play on their way to school, in school and out of it. And without housing, without new housing for new families, we will not have children. Many, we will not have new children come in in our neighborhood, and this is all desperately and crucially important to us. The other thing I want to address here is accessibility. It is so important for us, for having our seniors be able to age in place. That's something we owe the seniors who built our neighborhood and have built our communities. And we're comparing, I've heard many of our neighbors, of my neighbors, compare, talk about options. Talk about an option that will not allow for elevators and will not allow for accessibility for seniors. And to say that, I've heard a lot about neighbors, my neighbors talk as well about tree trees, the dangers of the tree trees. Well, let's talk about trade-offs. Everything in life, as we all know, is about trade-offs. And if we are going to talk about the viability of trees, which are very important, but three trees compared to the stability of the lives of 35 families and the ability of people to age in place, there is no comparison here. There's absolutely no comparison. So, for my neighbors who are thinking about equity, about the vitality of neighborhood, I think this is such a great idea. I also want to talk a little bit about, I've heard another speaker talk about brown field sites. Why don't we put people on brown field sites? Well, let's remediate brown field sites and put people on those too. This is, that is not, oh, why not that? They're not mutually exclusive. That's a yes and, yes, let's support this project and let's remediate brown field sites and put people on. I want to wrap up here and just really focus on trade-offs here. I've heard many of my neighbors talk about shadows, which is very important, and having natural light. But I just want to remind ourselves, let's spare a thought for young families. Let's spare a thought for Michael Weave, councillor Weave grew up in the neighborhood, and folks in his grad class who can no longer afford to live in this neighborhood. 35 families who can find stability. Let's think about those. Let's support them.
Thank you so much. That is your five minutes. Appreciate you phoning in this evening, and there are no questions for you. So, council, we're going to move on to speaker number 61, who is Eleanor Roberts.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead, up to five.
Thank you. City councillor and mayor, thank you for hearing me. My name is Eleanor Roberts, and I'm a renter in Kitzelano. I'm opposed to the rezoning and construction of this building. The proposed units have a rent that is 45% higher than the existing rents. Currently, the site has 6,592 square feet of rental at $155 per square foot. The proposed eight units of so-called affordable housing have a combined square footage of 4,579 square feet at $235 per square foot. So, over 2,000 square feet less than what exists at the moment. The existing six rentals each have three bedrooms, 1,112 square feet, and rent for $1,700 a month. The proposed project represents a decrease in the number of low-rent bedrooms from the present 18 to 11 bedrooms. The three two-bedroom rental units in a proposed building would be 569 square feet and would rent for $1,600. The one-bedrooms are for 20 square feet, and the studios are 323 square feet. Some of the previous callers in support of this project have mentioned that they are looking for affordable family accommodation in Kitzelano. I'm not sure for two-bedroom, 569-square-foot unit is what they had in mind. As a renter, I understand the frustration at the lack of affordable rents in Vancouver by callers supporting this project. But I question whether these callers have considered the probable rents for the 27 units in the building that are not part of MERP. Per the city's rental incentive guidelines for 2019, on the west side, the bylaw provides a monthly grant for two bedrooms at $2,703 and three bedrooms, $3,559, hardly affordable for the majority of Vancouver renters and young families. According to CMHC, buildings built in the past two years generally rent for about 45% more than all other buildings. The vacancy rate for one-bedroom completed in the past two years is 22%. This is from Carrie Gold's article in Globe a week ago. According to statistics, Canada's 2016 census, 54% of the households in Kitzelano are rentals, which is much higher than a good part of the city. MERP policy guidelines state in the 3G table explaining the criteria for MERP projects in RMM zones, "Consider redevelopment of highly underutilized sites with a low number of existing tenants, buildings with a maximum of three existing rental units." This is certainly not an underutilized site with a low number of tenants. I question the city staff's interpretation of using the word "building" rather than "site" as a way to justify this project. Surely, the spirit, if not the letter of the law, would make this site ineligible for MERP. Here we have six existing rental units and 13 tenants. The discrepancy between the definition of site and building seems an example of lack of common sense, of bizarre nitpicking. I also have questions about the landscaping that was shown on the architectural rendering presented on February 16th. In looking at the size of the site and the size of the proposed building, it seems unlikely that there's actually room for trees at the size shown in the drawing. it seems unlikely that there's actually room for trees at the size shown in the drawing. Some mention was also made of garden plots. Garden plots somehow gives the misleading idea of a sizable garden area. Was the landscaping added just to make the project seem more acceptable? What guarantees are in place that the depicted landscaping will actually happen once the building is completed? My family rents a suite in an older Kitzellano character home. My understanding is that if the city planning staff made it easier, many owners of homes in Kitzellano would be adding more suites and laneway homes. Why does the city make it so difficult for them to do so, and yet allow rezonings to take place? That seems so destructive of neighborhood morale. Thank you.
Thank you, you do have some questions, Councilor Hardwick, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your precision, the devil is in the details. I just wanted to confirm, to make sure we're on the same page here. So there are six duplex units, each of which have three bedrooms that are renting at seventeen hundred dollars a month. Does that align with your information?
Yes.
And each one of those is over eleven hundred square feet, which comes out to about a dollar, fifty, dollar, sixty a square foot?
Yeah.
Rent, okay? And then there's eight MRRP units in contrast, so a net increase of two units. However, they're, they range from being studios, two studios, one, two, three, one-bedrooms, and three two-bedrooms. Is that what you're getting as well? So instead of eighteen bedrooms, there's a sum, a total of eleven in the MRRP scenario? And the monthly rents between the six units existing is the same as the eight units in the MRRP?
Yes, that's correct.
Still on the same page?
Yeah, but there's two thousand square feet less, and it's, and the rent is thirty-five per square foot.
So the six units, the six units are sixty-five hundred square feet overall, and the eight units are only thirty-five hundred square feet overall. So you've got approximately, for the eight units, you've got half of the square footage of what exists in the six units that are already there.
Uh, well.
Think of that right?
Yeah, uh, yeah, kind of, yeah, yeah, a little bit more, but yes.
And then overall, the cost per, the rent cost per square foot is two eighty-nine versus one fifty-five. So basically, double the cost per square foot rent for less space and fewer units, or fewer bedrooms, I guess, because there's a decrease in the number of bedrooms from eighteen to eleven. So is that the math you're working with?
Yes, I, yes, it is.
So what we're giving here is, we're losing six three-bedrooms that are affordable. Overall, we're gaining eight units, but losing in overall beds. And the cost is double, basically, per square foot for the units, in a, in a direct apples-to-apples comparison.
So please keep the questions in this segment.
I'm just verifying, because we are going through the
Don't need to yell at me, I'm just saying.
I'm just saying, we're going through the details, and I want to make sure that we're on the same page in our analysis.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So it doesn't seem all that affordable for now.
Okay, well, the devil is in the details, and I appreciate your attention to the details, thank you.
Thank you, that's it, four questions for you, thank you very much for calling in, and we're going to move to the next speaker. We have Michael Wu, speaker number sixty-three. Michael Wu, speaker number sixty-three.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I am just double-checking. No, apparently, speaker number sixty-two is not on the line.
Okay, that was sixty-three, looking for Michael Wu, and then sixty-four, or Victoria Wu.
Mayor Stewart, I'm hearing, I think it's all happening very quickly, I'm hearing sixty-two is now on the line, Kelly?
Talaiko.
Thank you.
Kelly Talaiko, number, speaker number sixty-two, please go ahead, up to five minutes. Kelly Talaiko, speaker number sixty-two.
Speaker number sixty-two. Hello, hello?
Hi there.
This is Kelly Talaiko. Yes, I was cut off previously because, uh,
Mayor Stewart, I'm hearing, I think it's all happening very quickly, I'm here.
Oh, I think you've got your computer on in the background.
Now I'm on line, Kelly. Thank you.
There we go.
Um, Mayor Stewart, will you give me one minute, less than one minute, to now mute my speaker? Because I had to call just, what's going on?
Uh, you can, no, we can give you time to get situated.
I need to mute my computer.
That's right. Sounds better.
Hello, I'm, this is Kelly Talaiko.
Hi there.
I'm, hello, Mayor Stewart, and good evening, councilors. I am Kelly Talaiko, a long-term Vancouver resident, speaking this evening in opposition to this proposal on the grounds that Vancouver citizens have not been correctly informed about the rezoning process. In the past year, I've spoken at several public hearings, always to the same point, that I urge Mayor and Council to ensure that communications to residents reflect the reality of the rezoning process about which there is clearly widespread misunderstanding. At most rezoning hearings, including this one, citizens have come forward to point out that a proposal does not meet the criteria laid out in a community plan or an approved city policy such as MRRP. To them, it has seemed obvious and logical that an application that does not satisfy requirements should not be approved. It has seemed obvious and logical that the parties to determine neighborhood fit are the neighborhood. Yet, with the sole exception of a South Granville site in the vicinity of a hospice, every housing application brought forward by the planning department has been approved by the majority of this council. If only Vancouver residents had understood the little-known fact disclosed at the January twentieth City Council meeting. I call your attention to the city website video of that meeting and the time period approximately eight oh four to eight thirty-six PM. A discussion took place about whether applications such as this one should move to public hearing if they do not meet the criteria of plans and policies. In that half hour, clarifying statements were made by Acting City Manager Mockery, Deputy Director of Current Planning O'Donnell, Legal Counsel Goldberg, and Mayor Stewart. All of them stated that the planning department is free to bring forward projects which do not comply with plans or policies, and not only is planning free to interpret plans or policies, but city council is free to approve projects whether or not they comply with existing plans or policies. This is an astonishing revelation which should be widely communicated to residents. I repeat the timeframe on the video, eight oh four to eight thirty-six PM, and I note particularly Mayor Stewart's helpful clarity in stating at eight thirty-six PM, quote, "Because we pass a policy, it doesn't mean we're bound to follow it," unquote. This is the kind of crystal-clear communications that residents deserve. No wonder that the processes associated with rezoning decisions have been viewed in some quarters as done deals or smoke and mirrors. No wonder that residents feel betrayed or cynical when decisions appear to ignore stated requirements like number of stories, FSRs, neighborhood character, and so on. The revelation of January twentieth makes clear there are no impediments to planning considering, nor council approving, anything. If this important revelation can be widely communicated, perhaps citizens can then understand why council is even entertaining a project that does not fit defined parameters. In fact, some further clarity is needed. If planning and council are free to consider developments that do not meet the criteria of approved policy, why is it that the balak lava option cannot be considered on the grounds that there is no policy framework to accommodate it? This makes no sense. So there needs to be a framework so that policies within the framework can then be disregarded? I'm one, among many speakers you've heard, who believes that words have meaning and policies are meant to clarify ground rules that have been previously debated and agreed to. No one comes out looking good when the goalposts keep changing. In the words of an eminent nineteenth-century personality who is still read today, quote, "If I had a world of my own, everything would be nonsense. Nothing would be what it is, because everything would be what it isn't. And contrariwise, what is, it wouldn't be, and what it wouldn't be, it would, you see?" Unquote. That's Lewis Carroll, speaking through the Mad Hatter. Well, this is no tea party, and your vote tonight, Mayor and Council, has important implications. Citizens who have spent time and energy to develop a locally accepted solution to a complex issue will soon learn whether neighborhood-based planning has any meaning at all, except for the city, staff, and elected officials to be able to smile, to thank the speakers, and check off a box labeled "public engagement." Thank you.
Thanks so much, I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Just checking with the clerks here. I've got sixty-five, Mark Werner. Clerks, do we have Mark Werner?
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here, and it appears we do not.
Okay, how about sixty-six, Jenny Chen?
I believe we had Jenny Chen earlier, so we do not have her now.
Okay, thanks, that is the end of the list at this stage, so I'm going to call the first time, just for folks who were either on the list or not on the list that would like to speak to this item. If there are any other speakers who'd like to speak, please call one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, participant code one oh six one four four five, hashtag, get on the list. And I'm going to check for the clerks, is there anyone on the call, anyone on the line?
Mayor Stewart, I'm just checking, I'm getting some messages here I need to read, could you just?
Sure, yeah, no problem, go right ahead.
So I'm hearing, Mayor Stewart, that we have number sixty-three, which is Michael Wu.
Great, okay, thanks very much, clerks, we'll call Michael Wu.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here, I understand Michael Wu is on the phone.
Great. Thanks so much, Michael Wu, are you there? Great, thanks, I hear some background noise.
Hi, um, hello, Mayor and Council, I am a resident of Vancouver, and thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight about why I oppose the force of balak lava development. First, I personally believe that it is a poor design. It is just a box design that does not fit in with the neighborhood.
Can I just pause you there for a second? I just want to pause you there because you're fading in and out a little bit, and I can hear some background noise, so that, it does make it difficult to hear you.
Hello, can you hear me now?
That seems better, okay, go ahead.
Um, just to reiterate, my name is Michael, and I'm a resident, I live in Vancouver, and thank you for allowing me to talk to you tonight about why I oppose the development.
I'm sorry you were clear when you checked it, and then you faded again. See, that's very clear right there.
How about now?
Okay, we'll try that, go ahead.
Uh, first of all, I believe that the design is, um, does not fit in with the neighborhood.
Your speaker right now, um, the information for you.
I'm sorry, speaker, there is background noise and some kind of interference, and we can't, we can't hear you.
Um, is this okay?
Yep, we do have background noise, I'm just wondering, just going to check with the clerks, clerks, is that somebody else on the line, or what is that?
I, I am hearing the speaker okay, from the chamber perspective. Can we try again?
I can hear somebody speaking right now. Okay, perhaps, speaker, we can go ahead, it does sound like an echo, perhaps you've got your computer on or something in the background, but let's try it again, sorry for this.
Uh, it's okay. Um, regarding the design, I think it does not fit in with the neighborhood. And since the application was submitted in January twenty twenty, the developers had more than enough chances to change the design to fit in with the neighborhood. But instead, the developer chose not to make any real changes, and to take the chances in hearings. I think the application should not be rewarded for ignoring the community's attempts to indulge them. To consider this and the lack of community support, I urge the council to reject this application. It is also clear from talking to the surrounding communities that the building itself is not a good fit for the lot size. A building may be scaled back to fit in with the neighborhood, and there are no other buildings of similar size in the area. The R and F zoning was established by residents in Archie zones from exactly this type of oversized spot zoning. It is true that the city has a mandate to include a supply of housing, however, not at the expense of the rest of us. This building forces adjacent neighbors and the rest of the neighborhood to take a disproportionate amount of the negative impacts. Housing needs to be distributed more evenly throughout cities, however, not like this. Lastly, I object to providing the applicant with a utility waiver of almost four hundred thousand. Any building built at the site should pay for its own fair share to upgrade the water, sewage, and drainage infrastructure. It is not fair to the taxpayers of the city to pay for the developer's labor. The developer has many ways to make a financial return at the site, through market or non-market rents. Please do not offer our taxpayer money to disavow it, to pay this utility upgrade expense alone. If a site is to be developed, let us support the alternate design that has been proposed by the community, called the balak lava option, that has been put together by the West Kitzellano residents, the police agent, and we love it. If the balak lava option can get a comparable rentable square footage, while at the same time gaining support of the community, then to me, it is a much better option, and our council will take the leadership that is needed to the applicant and the community and the policy to help us to make this happen. Thank you, and once again, I oppose this application, and I urge you guys to reject this rezoning application.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Sorry about the technical difficulties.
No, that's okay, thanks so much for calling in, you don't have any questions, so I'm going to go to the clerk and see if there's anybody else on the line with a second call.
Mayor Stewart, thank you, I do believe we have speaker number sixty-four, Victoria Wu, also on the line.
Okay, thanks, we'll go, Victoria Wu, speaker number sixty-four. Victoria Wu?
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk again. I'm not hearing anything either.
Okay, anybody else on the line?
So the next two speakers is number sixty-five and sixty-six, but I am not hearing that they are on the line.
Okay, I've called Jenny Chen and Mark Werner. Okay, I've called Jenny Chen and Mark Werner already. I've called their names, but if they're on the line, they're happy. So Mark Werner's Speaker number 65.
Okay, we're not seeing Speaker number 65, and I believe, as I said earlier, Speaker number 66 was already speaking.
Okay, there was Jenny Tan and then Jenny Chen. Jenny Chen, Speaker number 66. Great, go ahead. Thanks very much. Speaker number 66, Jenny Chen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can. Please go ahead.
Right, thank you. Just for your information, I was Speaker 27 on yesterday, and then earlier you couldn't connect me either. But anyway, my name's Jenny Chen, and I live in Vancouver. I oppose this rezoning application for the following reasons. First of all, the building is a poor design that does not fit in with the neighbourhood. It is also clear from walking around the neighbourhood that the building itself does not fit the lot size. I understand that the applicant had a lot of opportunities to make corrections, as he was approached numerous times by the community who has a neighbourhood well been at heart, and they proposed a lot of creative suggestions to the building work. It is a disappointment that the applicant made no significant changes and proceeded to this public hearing. The building needs to be scaled back to fit in with the neighbourhood. There are no buildings of similar size in the area. The RM4 zoning was established to protect residents in RT zones from exactly this type of oversized spot rezoning. So because of this and lack of community support, I urge council to reject this application. The second reason I oppose is that this project fails the test of equity for the neighbourhood. MURB states that the height and density needs to be respected in recently approved community plans. However, this is a very uneven playing field, as not all areas of the city have been given an opportunity to have an updated community plan. A lack of housing is a citywide problem, and the city is asking neighbours to accept our neighbouring building in exchange for our citywide benefit. And in fact, not the entire building is all moderate income, only 20% of that. Please keep that in mind. Some concession is acceptable, and I support higher densities than permitted, but impacts of the proposed building are too severe for this to meet the test of equity. The city's mandate to increase supply of housing should not come at the expense of the rest of us. This building forces the adjacent neighbours and the rest of the neighbourhood to shoulder more than their share of negative impact. Housing needs to be distributed more evenly throughout the city, not through this spot rezoning process. MURB also states that there needs to be a level of neighbourhood support. Based on what I've heard the last few times and tonight, and seen, there is a lot of opposition, and not a lot of support from the neighbours who actually live in the community. These kind of support should not come, opposition should not be from developers or people who do not live in a neighbourhood. Lastly, I object to waiving almost $400,000 of utility DCL. Any building that will be built at this site and anywhere in Vancouver should pay for its fair share to upgrade water, sewer, and drainage infrastructure. It is not fair to the taxpayer to have to pay the developer's way. The developer has many ways to make financial return at this site, through market or non-market rents or increased FSR. Please do not offer our taxpayer money to this developer or any developer to pay for their utilities upgrades expense. Every dollar that you waived is every dollar all taxpayer have to come up to pay. If the site is to be developed, then I support the alternative design that has been proposed by the community called the Balakava Option. I understand that the Balakava Option is not on the table for you to approve, and therefore I urge the city to reject this rezoning application as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any questions for you, so I wanted to thank you for calling in this evening. I'm going to go back to the clerks. Apparently, we have some other people on the line.
Mayor Stewart, yes, it is the clerk here. I understand there are more speakers on the line.
Okay. We can start with the next one.
Yes, I'm sorry, we just don't have their names, so they're going to have to identify themselves and whether they're a resident.
That's right. So we can start with this first speaker.
If there are any additional speakers that would like to address council, please press star one on your phone now.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. Apparently, we need to be able to speak to the speakers and determine who is on there to speak. So if you want to do your first and second call, then we can take the recess and get that business done.
Okay, I have done the first and second call, but I will do the third call, and then we'll take, we'll take, you think five minutes is sufficient, clerks?
Yes, that will be sufficient.
So, Council, I've made my third call now, and we will take a five-minute break to sort
Apparently, we need to be able to speak to the speakers and determine who is on there to speak. So if you want to do your first and second call, then we can take the recess and get that business done.
Okay, I have done the first and second call, but I will do the third call, and then we'll take, we'll take, you think five minutes is sufficient, clerks?
Yes, that will be sufficient.
Okay, great. So, Council, I've made my third call now, and we will take a five-minute break to sort out the remaining speakers, and so we'll come back at 8:01.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm understanding we do have another speaker on the line. We're just getting the line unmuted. If you could just be patient with us. Thank you.
From the city's planning department, you can get some population stats, the population by age and income and all the rest. So I just took a quick look, and you know, if you look at the last 15 years, Kitsellano generates enough people to produce about 3,000 new households. Oh, sorry, about 3,000 households over 20 years, or about 150 households per year. And that, of course, doesn't sound like that much. But the problem is, for the last 15 years, Kitsellano has only added approximately 60 actual homes per year. And so I think that when we ask ourselves whether a building like this belongs in Kitsellano, that we should be asking, what happens to those other 90 families every single year? Where do they go? Well, if they grew up in Kitsellano, they probably had parents with home equity, so they probably buy or rent in other neighborhoods. So if we don't want those 90 families to end up in Fairview or Mount Pleasant, or pushing into the downtown east side, we need to make sure that they can find homes in Kitsellano. And that means ensuring that Kitsellano grows by more than the rate of their children each and every year. An earlier comment asked for an equitable distribution of housing. Of course, that is a wonderful aim. We should all strive for that. But any honest look at the history of housing in Vancouver will show you that all of the housing has gone downtown, all of the housing has gone in Fairview, Mount Pleasant, and none of it, very little, has gone in west side, low-density, owner-occupied, dominated area. So if we want equitable distribution of housing, this is a great place for it. The only problem with this building, of course, is that council or city policy all but demands that new housing go on top of already sites that are already dense with tenants. The only reason to oppose this project is the fact that people will be evicted. Those are the only people's views that matter here. The idea that we would equate someone being evicted with someone else not liking the shape of the building is absurd. So I wish it was somewhere else. I wish it was going into Chauncey. I wish it was going into West Point Gray. I wish it was replacing an owner-occupier, low-density house who is selling willingly. That's not what's on offer. Likewise, the Balaclava option is not on offer. So I think this is the best we're going to get to try and keep as many Kitsellano kids in Kitsellano and not gentrifying other parts of the city. So I urge you to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions for you. So thank you for participating tonight. I'm going to go back to the clerks and see if there's anybody else on the line.
Mayor Stewart, I'm just checking with our individual working on this. I'm not seeing at the moment that we have anybody else on the line, but if you could give me a moment to check.
Hello?
No problem.
Hello?
Hi there, how are you?
I'm good.
Are you voting in to participate in the public hearing?
Uh, yeah, I am.
Okay. Could I have your name? Could I have your first name and last name, and whether you're a resident of Vancouver?
Um, my name is Zach Velasco, and I am an 18-year-old resident of Vancouver.
Great, thanks. You have up to five minutes. Whenever you're ready, please go ahead.
Hi, mayor and council. My name is Zach, as you've heard, and I'm an 18-year-old Vancouver resident, speaking in, as this is my first public hearing. I'm speaking here in favor of the development. You have to remember and look at the privilege in the midst of a housing crisis. People have the privilege to look at things like height, landscaping, neighborhood character, when people can't afford anything in the city and some are homeless and, yeah. Look at those voices who haven't been heard today. We've heard voices of landowners and developers, but who haven't we been hearing yet? We haven't been hearing from renters and people with marginalized identities. You must also remember that zoning was created by white colonizers to exclude people of color. And those respects can still be seen today in the lack of diversity in West Vancouver, which we must remind ourselves was created for homes to escape from the poor who are encroaching on the downtown and the west end. And to the point that some speakers have said about renters, to just go in a laneway or basement suite, well, honestly, to me philosophically, and to bring some of my Gen Z talk from my other friends, it just looks inhumane and reminds me sadly of the movie Parasite, where the person living above the millionaire. And to the price, I know people, like a recent immigrant who is sadly paying $16,000 for a basement suite for a family of five in East fan, and would totally want to move up to an apartment like this offered in the development. We must also remember that the Balaclava option, which does not have elevators, to me, in my opinion, is a bit abhorrent because it doesn't meet the needs of the disabled and the elderly. I remember at my old apartment, helping an elderly lady down the stairs every day as the apartment did not have an elevator, and she said that she would totally want to live in an apartment with an elevator. We must also remind ourselves that this neighborhood has the privilege of not seeing this proposal as a gentrifier, but as, quote unquote, "an attack on the single-family home character of the neighborhood." And lastly, as a political science student, the first few classes have taught me that not all voices are heard in a democracy. And council, I urge you to remember that those will actually benefit from an increase in rental stock. Thank you for listening to me, and I'm sorry about my stuttering.
Thank you very much. You were very eloquent tonight, and I hope to hear you again at another public hearing. Thanks so much. And I don't see any questions for you, so we'll move on to ask the clerks if there's other speakers. Thanks again.
Mayor Stewart, yes, there are others on the line.
Great, okay.
Speaker with phone number ending in 2043, your line is now unmuted.
Hello?
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Jared Anderson, and I'm speaking tonight in support of the rezoning for 3084 West Fourth Ave and 2010 Balaclava Street. I am a 23-year-old UBC grad. I currently work full-time in the communications field, and I'm supporting this proposal because I believe we need to build many more buildings like this all over the city of Vancouver so that renters have suitable housing options more readily available as their lives and housing needs change. I'm supporting this proposal because I believe that my cohort of young professionals would love to live in a building like this at this location. But the reality is, unfortunately, that we are often forced to consider rental housing options that don't necessarily offer security of tenure. They're often overpriced or are in substandard spaces like basement suites, like the previous individual just referred to, or severely aging buildings. Projects like the rezoning of this Fourth and Balaclava property will not only make the city more affordable for us, but also reinforces the notion of neighborhoods and belonging that makes the west side so divine. And I know that has been a topic that many people have talked about. I am supporting this proposal because I believe welcoming more diverse people into this neighborhood and the rest of the west side will help keep this part of town vibrant, lively, and interesting. Thank you for your time, and I encourage you to move this application forward without hesitation.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions for you. I just wanted to thank you for calling in tonight. Back to the clerks.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Stewart. We do have, what I'm understanding, approximately eight more people on the line. If you could ask them to identify themselves. Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks. Right, so next speaker, just looking for your first name, last name, and whether you're a resident of Vancouver.
Speaker with phone number ending in 6680, your line is now unmuted.
Hello?
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Michael Penalosa, and I am a resident of the city of Vancouver. I'm also an urban planner and a real estate development consultant practitioner with over 25 years' experience. I also was a former resident of Kitsellano and have moved out because of the price. Luckily, we're one of the few that were able to afford a home, but moved south and east and south and east until we qualified. And I'd like to just raise a few points, and I don't want to rehash all the same comments that have been in support or in opposition of the project, but I'd really like to emphasize, what's the real issue here? You know, as an urban planner and I've attended many of these public hearings, both representing the private sector and the public sector, it seems the common denominator here is height. Everyone talks about FSR and density, but that really means height. And a few speakers ago, it was mentioned that the developers have an opportunity to build more affordable housing if they're given more height and density. Well, this is what everyone is opposing right now. And I just want to make it clear that this project is purpose-built rental. It's not made for affordable housing. And the other issue that really hasn't been raised, and I've been listening for the last couple of nights, is that the financial aspect and the feasibility of a project like this. And I know that this Balaclava plan that's been talked about at some length says it's 85% that can have some of the rental floor space covered. Well, maybe 85% doesn't really pentele from a financial perspective. And I think you have to really look at the development and the applicant's perspective as well. You know, from what I heard, he doesn't sound like a big, bad developer type that most people equate to. And what he's doing is trying to provide more rental housing to the community. And many others who are opposed may say, you know, this just doesn't fit, but design, to me, is very subjective. It's been mentioned by many other people. So I believe that, you know, this project here, if you look at the financial perspective, these rental units don't make much money at the end of the day. You know, they're 3% cap rate, if those in the industry would really understand. The alternative, if this is turned down, is perhaps the developer could just go the normal route, build RM4 and build strata condominiums, and probably make more money. And it's interesting that he's not even proposing that, or the developer, and they're pursuing, from what I understand, a very long time as purpose-built rental. So I'm not sure why there's so much opposition. Obviously, it seems that they're very passionate people who are concerned about heights and invasion of privacy, but let's not forget, even a four-story building with a balcony looking to the south, those who are concerned about privacy, they will also be looking into those yards and the south sides of those properties. It's the same thing, it's just two stories lower. So from my perspective, in my humble opinion, I try to look at this from a very practical perspective. The city is in dire need of more rental housing. So yes, it would be great if there are more affordable or moderate income. This is providing at least 20%. So I urge council to really think about this dispassionately and from a practical point of view to consider moving this forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your time. And I don't see any questions for you, so we're going to move on to the next speaker. Speaker, if you could just state your first and last name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver, and then you have up to five minutes.
Speaker with phone number ending in 6225, your phone line is unmuted.
Hello?
Oh, hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go up the first and last name, and whether you're a resident, and then you have up to five minutes.
Great, thank you. My name is Peter Waldecurch, and yes, I am a resident of Vancouver. Mayor and council, thank you for letting me speak. I'm here to express my support for these homes. Now, I've been listening to all of this public hearing, which is, I'm reminded that we're on day four of a public hearing that started on February 11th to deal with three items on the agenda. And, you know, one thing I've noticed is that, you know, the supporters of these homes are consistently talking about people, the people who are struggling in Vancouver, people who are struggling with unaffordability, with long commutes, struggling to find suitable housing for themselves and their families, while the opponents are consistently talking about the aesthetics of the building, specifically the height. Sometimes they talk about their patios, sometimes they talk about the renters and their basements. And so I want you to all to ask yourselves, what's more important to you? What are your values? Who do you support in this city? And let's put this in context. The actual, real-world proposal that you have before you right now is for 35 secure rental homes, eight of which are below market with vacancy control. Now, these are real homes that real people can live in. Now, the so-called Balaclava option, which to me, from what I've heard, doesn't seem very realistic, I think was about 20 units, is what one of the previous speakers mentioned. So we are now at over seven hours of public hearing time over this 135-unit building, where we get the mayor and council and senior staff all assembled at tremendous expense for hours and hours to bicker over two floors and 15 homes? This is not a reasonable way of proceeding. Now, finally, I want to bring up something that I think about a lot, which is climate change. You know, I saw this story on The Guardian the other day. The chief executive of the UK's Environment Agency delivered a speech to insurers where he warned them of collapsing infrastructure and the collapse of ecosystems. He warns them that the real-world things we are seeing are consistent with the worst-case scenarios. And this is a quote, "If this sounds like science fiction, let me tell you something you need to know." This is that, over the last few years, the reasonable worst case for several of the flood incidents the EA has responded to have actually happened, and it's getting larger. This is why our thinking needs to change faster than the climate, and why our response needs to match the scale of the challenge." That's the end of the quote. Now, councillors, and here I'm talking especially to the green councillors, we are talking about a quite small building, six floors, in a central part of a major metro area. It's transit-rich, close to downtown, in the Broadway corridor, which are the number-one and number-two job centers in the entire province, close to amenities, close to jobs, easy access to UBC. This is a tiny example of the sort of thing we need to embrace in a world dealing with climate change. I ask you to think about the next 50 years, at least, because if you can't embrace this, then you simply aren't taking climate change seriously. If you were, you'd be trying to be encouraging more housing here. So please, support more homes on the west side. Help bring more diversity to Kits. Support these homes. Oh, and by the way, councillor Hardwick, I don't work in the real estate industry. Thank you very much for my comments.
Thank you for calling in. I don't see any questions for you, so I'll ask the clerk to bring up the next speaker.
Sarah Steele, your line is open.
Thank you.
Thanks. Just your first and last name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver, please.
Hi, my name is Sarah Steele, and I am a resident of Vancouver. Thank you for taking my call. I am sure you must be exhausted, but thank you for staying on the course and hearing us all and giving us a chance to be heard. I have lived in the Kitsellano neighborhood for 15 years, first as a renter and now as a condo owner. I see the current building on the proposed development site every day, as the buildings are visible from the communal courtyard that I share and enjoy with my neighbors. I am strongly opposed to this development. First and foremost, I'm against the height, as so many have said, but I'm also against the precedent that would be set if approved. And I'm also very concerned about the livability of the units as proposed in the developer's statistic drawings. Due to the height, approximately, as you know, 100 residents of the Santa Barbara building, along with many more in the surrounding blocks, would live in the shadow of this building by early afternoon every day. The shadow study provided by the developers does not show the whole picture. It only presents their findings from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., omitting the hours of the day that the building would cast the greatest shadow. The three-foot height reduction proposed last week is not enough. The loss of natural light will negatively impact the daily quality of life of many people. Vancouver is dark and gray enough as it is. I invite city council members to visit my courtyard outside, or just go to the alley behind the building and see for yourself the impact the building would have on the skyline for hundreds of people in this block. Has anyone from city council visited the site? You cannot understand the impact without standing on the ground. I'm also very concerned about how the zoning changes would extend this negative impact to the building's height and box of design to the entire neighborhood. It would set a precedent that would encourage for the development of more oversized buildings in the neighborhood. As you know, there are currently four empty lots within two blocks of this proposed development site. If the zoning changes were made for this development, soon other lots would likely ask for similar allowances. By approving this development, you're not just allowing for the construction of just one tall, out-of-character building, but you are paving the way for many more like it, shadowing and closing in so many other residents, just like myself. This development could be the first domino that completely changes the neighborhood's historic charm forever, and the livability for thousands of people. And also what? What do we gain from this proposed development? 35 very small rental units, only eight of which, as you know, are reserved for moderate income. Three of the eight units are two-bedroom units. However, did you know that the average square footage of the two-bedroom units in this building is only 590 square feet? That is less than 600 square feet for two bedrooms. The one-bedroom unit's average 414 square feet. This is barely suitable for a couple. As a mother of a toddler currently living in 650 square feet of a one-bed plus den condo, trust me when I say, none of these units in the building are suitable for families. 35 units sounds fair, but the design cannot actually house many more people than the ones living in the three-bedroom units already on the site. Kitsellano needs more rental units, but not like the ones being proposed here. Should our whole neighborhood change so that maybe a dozen UBC students or young professionals can have controlled rent? I don't think so. There's enough student housing at UBC, and there are currently dozens of unrented condos downtown, suitable for professionals or couples, single people, you know? But this neighborhood is missing families. Kitsellano in Vancouver needs affordable housing, livable housing for families, and this building does not have it. The development primarily benefits the developers and businesses, and that's fair, but still, it will negatively impact so many people who live here and could, you know, change the whole neighborhood under the guise of 35 hardly livable, overpriced micro-units. This building does not meet the needs of the community. It does not cater to families. It does not promote neighborly connections like other buildings in the neighborhood, like the Santa Barbara and other ones nearby. City councillors, I ask you, please, listen to the great number of concerns presented by so many people in the neighborhood, and vote against this development, or at least suggest it be changed to address all these concerns in some way. Thank you for listening, and thank you for all your time.
Thank you. You do have questions, councillor Dominado, for up to five minutes.
Hi, thanks, mayor, and thanks for calling in this evening. I just wanted to clarify a point you made. Did you just reflect that you currently, yourself, live in a one-bedroom-plus-den strata condominium with your toddler?
Yes, I have a two-year-old, and my husband, and my cat, and we live in 650 square feet, one bedroom and a little office that is now a little nursery. And we're going to have to leave the neighborhood soon when she is too big for her crib.
Right, so it sounds like you're already cramped, and you don't find that suitable. But I guess I was going to ask you, did you have a choice? Were there other options available to you? Because you're speaking about what's being proposed isn't livable, affordable, or reasonable, but you're in a strata condo, you're not in a detached home or in a town.
Yeah, well, my husband and I are two professionals, and I work part-time, and we really can't afford anything much bigger than this. You know, we were lucky and got this, you know, when we were, you know, six, seven years ago, when we were just married. And we love the neighborhood, we don't want to leave, so we're making it work as long as we can, but it's getting very hard. And the options for staying in the neighborhood are very, very, are very slim, you know? There really isn't, you know, I would move into a two-bedroom rental unit if I could find it and stay in the neighborhood, but like a bigger one, one that I could, like, you can't fit a family in 590 square feet, like these buildings, right? So like, this building, it looks like a lot of units, but it's not going to house many more people than the people already living there right now, because you've got, like, six three-bedroom units. Like, I would move into one of those units in a heartbeat, you know? I would, you know, sell my condo, put the investment in, like, you know, my retirement savings and rent for a while, just so I could stay in this beautiful place. You know, even though I am a owner, you know, I'm a millennial, and I'm just trying my best here, and, you know?
Yeah, no, it's an expensive market, and there's no doubt. I appreciate that. And I appreciate you calling in.
And this isn't a solution.
Yeah, no, thanks for sharing, I appreciate it.
Councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes. Thanks, more questions, councillor Hardwick?
Yes, thank you. How many square feet did you say you're, are you in a one-bedroom or two-bedroom?
I am in a one-bedroom plus den, 650 square feet.
650 square feet, because I'm looking at the two bedrooms here, and they're 569 square feet for a two-bedroom.
Yeah, yeah, they range from 560, they range, there's a couple of them that go up to 720, but the average, if you use the average of the two bedrooms, the average is 590. So some of these two-bedroom units, like, I don't think either bedroom could fit a double bed. It sounds like a junior style design, where each bedroom can actually only accommodate a twin bed and like a side table, right? where each bedroom can actually only accommodate a twin bed and like a side table, right? So like, the one-bedroom units are average four hundred and fourteen square feet, so that's not, that's not suitable for a couple, right? And the studios are like living in a, you know, like, living in a hotel room, right? So this is not creating homes or housing families. This is housing people who could be housed on campus at UBC or in the many vacant apartments downtown right now.
Yeah, I'm looking, the studio's three hundred and twenty-three square feet. Just trying to get a sense of that.
So you think about how many people can fit in this, right? Not many more than those living now. But if you had a unit, a development that made for more units that were larger, you could actually fit more people in a four-bedroom building. It would be less units, but more people and more families and more livable space. Not these pigeonholing us into these tiny shoeboxes that nobody can actually really enjoy while shadowing and crowding. It'd be so much crowding in every sense.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your input. Appreciate it.
Thanks for hearing me and for all you're doing.
Thanks, that's it for questions for you, and I'm gonna go back to the clerk now for the next speaker. First and last name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver.
Larry Benj, your line is open.
Hello?
Hi there. Please go ahead.
Hello, my name's, my name's Larry Benj. I'm with the Coalition of Vancouver Neighborhoods, and I'm definitely a Vancouver resident. Um, I am speaking tonight in opposition to this development. We've heard a lot over the last, what is it, three days now, of various things. The need for additional rental accommodation across the city, the need for increased densities to take care of the people who are coming into the city as well as people generated, as Stuart Smith says, from people who live here. And the needs from the previous caller of family housing, family units that actually fit families. And the insistence of one of the previous callers saying that this was, you know, consider the families that in this, these units. Well, there won't be too many families in this building because the majority of units are one-bedroom and studio apartments, a very small square footage, as was just discussed. So, we are in opposition to this building, not only because of the height and the problems that are inherent in that, but also the FSR, which attempts to squeeze a building on a very small site. And what you'll notice around, even with the Santa Barbara and the Dalano and other developments along the street, that in a lot of them, I would say, they have space around them. This one doesn't have space around them because there's no space left once you have the building on site. I want to explode some of the myths that have been mentioned by people. We don't welcome neighbors in Kitsalau. False. We want this building to be put somewhere else. Well, we object to the design and overall makeup of this building, so, yeah, maybe somewhere else. We're not against putting a building on this site, however. We are happy that the Millers, the owner-developers, were wanting to do rental from the beginning and have carried on through to this point, trying to get rental accommodation. No young families in Kitsalau. There are young families all over the place. I live in Kitsalau, they're all around me. That's a myth. Uh, no children, but all the schools are full up with waiting lists. I don't understand the, you know, that. Also, the problems with the development, the waiver of CACs and DCLs was discussed a little bit earlier, and how we, the taxpayers, have to spend for infrastructure on these projects. We shouldn't be. They're giving additional density already, and in addition, we have to waive all of that stuff. And there are options available. Options that, the balaklava option that has been discussed many times. That option presents a viable building form. It's been penciled out. James Evans, the developer who is working with the owner on this very project, has told us that it pencils out. We asked him what FSR would work economically. He said two-point-zero or above, and the balaklava option presents two-point-one to two-point-fifteen FSR. It shows a lot of promise, but then along came the referral hearing a couple of weeks ago, and that put a stop to the discussions with the neighborhood and the developers and the owners. We're very appreciative of them opening up to us because we were working towards, we thought, a quite viable solution, which was economically viable, give more rental and accommodation to the neighborhood, and something that the neighborhood could be in full support of. So, we're asking you to reject this application and request that staff work with the community and the applicant to develop a secured... We have the possibility with the balaklava option of being a MERP, secured rental housing, with twenty percent of the floor area dedicated to below-market units, so it meets those kinds of MERP. And it seems like from the planning department, we're getting the message that the only policy door that is open for this development is through MERP. We have gotten the message from the owners that early on, they were looking at market condos, and they were told, no, the MERP program is for you. We need to do a MERP program here. And one wonders whether MERP maybe doesn't work. Thank you, on small lots or not. But I wanna just say to council, you have the power to make change. There is a viable alternative here, and we would love to work towards it.
Thanks so much. You do have questions from councillor Hardwick? Councillor Hardwick, please go ahead. Anybody by mute, councillor Hardwick?
Sorry about that. Kitsalau is a single-family neighborhood that, did you hear that misconception too? Could you, would you characterize Kitsalau the way that it has been characterized as a west-side, single-family neighborhood?
Definitely not, because there's over, I believe, City Hall Watch has got a map showing over a thousand purpose-built rentals. There's more coming all the time. And we don't, you know, we don't put up fences and arm the neighborhood to keep those people out. We are very, we have renters all over the place, and it's no big deal. It's fine. This idea that we don't like renters and we want them to go somewhere else and not in, not in my neighborhood is laughable.
Why do you think this narrative is being perpetuated here?
I think the narrative is being perpetuated because adversarial labels and discussions breed good news and make it easy to target people and all of those things. It doesn't breed solution finding. It doesn't breed problem-solving. So, it's, it's a problem in itself. And I think that if, if most of these people who have come out in support of this project had a look at the reality, and it is a real option, of the balaklava option, they would probably be in support of it because it does everything that they're talking about. It provides more rental accommodation, et cetera, et cetera. But, I know we're addressing this one right now, and I think the, it seems to be the only avenue unless some councillors can see another way of doing this. It seems to be the only option, the only way to move towards something that we think is really better than what's being proposed. And that is to reject this, this proposal, so that we can get going. And believe me, we'd bust our butts to get this thing done ASAP because we think that the Millers are, you know, are interested in moving towards something.
I'm hearing some breathing and typing in the background there.
That's not here on mine.
Okay, well, whoever it is, if they could correct that. It has been suggested by various people that this doesn't pencil out in any other scenario other than the one that has been presented here as an architect and...
That's factually, that's, yeah, that's factually untrue. It's not just that me, who is an affiliate of the Urban Design Program at UBC and trained as an architect and have been working in the field for a long time. It's not just me that says it'll pencil out because I'm, I'm more interested in the developer saying it pencils out. James Evans has said it pencils out. I don't know what more you can ask. He was open enough and honest enough to give us what he thought was needed. And then when Scott Hine, who is an ex-urban designer with the city, who is working with our group, we're a bunch of architects, planners, and people who know what they're talking about, real estate people as well. This pencils out. It's economically viable. To say it's not, these people don't know what they're talking about because they haven't seen the actual option. It's easy to say that out of space, you know? Pull it off the clouds, pull this out of the sky and say, like Richard Whitstock said, this doesn't pencil out, it's no way. It does. I think that James Evans is quite a competent developer, and he has worked on a bunch of options, a bunch of projects across the city, similar to these. He knows what he's talking about. And if he says it pencils out, I believe him.
So, maybe we should be doing some evidence-based decision-making as opposed to aspirational target.
Question, councillor Hardwick?
Yeah, no, I just, yeah, thank you very much. And what I'm trying to get at here in my questions of Mr. Benj is the reality versus the aspiration, but I think that's been well articulated. Thank you.
Five minutes, thanks very much.
Almost five minutes.
And we'll go to the clerks. Is there anybody else on the line?
Yes, there is. Speaker with the phone number ending in nine-eight-zero-one, your line is now unmuted.
Thanks, please go ahead with your first and last name and if you're a resident of Vancouver.
Ah, good evening, your worship and council, can you hear me okay?
Sure can.
Great. My name is Owen Brady. I'm a renter in Vancouver, and I support this project. In fact, I think that a small, six-story building on a major street should not be controversial at all, nor subject to a public hearing, especially in this case, given the large step back on the top floor. Excuse me. I called in on an earlier item on the same agenda two weeks ago about a much larger, nine-story building, very close to where I live, that was on a smaller street and still raised much less apparent controversy. This proposal is a stone's throw from downtown and tens of thousands of jobs along Broadway. These are highly underutilized sites, where the old buildings are very likely to be replaced over the next few years. Given these facts, I don't think it should be controversial, even if the entire building were market-rate rentals. There are lots of new, higher-income households forming in Vancouver all the time. As of the last National Household Survey, new households earning over a hundred thousand dollars were actually more than a hundred percent of our net growth. You see this in Kitsalau, where twenty-one percent of households are in the top-income decile for Canada. When we don't build lots of new housing, these new households bid up rents for the existing housing all over the city, hence our current affordability predicament. Further, the eight brand-new, secure, moderate-income homes, which will be standing and permanently affordable for at least sixty more years, are well worth the DCL waiver. If MERP were the giveaway that some opponents claim, there would be a lineup of developers around the block. Instead, I'm not sure if the city has even filled the twenty spots in the pilot program yet, and it certainly hasn't been easy. A few people have spoken about the elevator as an inefficiency or basically a waste of space. I strongly disagree. Elevators are an amenity that are useful for most people and necessary for many, especially as our city's population gets older. Personally, I make a point of taking the stairs to my third-floor apartment as much as I can for exercise, but when I've got a lot of groceries or I'm moving something heavy, it sure is nice to have an elevator. I also encourage you all to think of elevators as the last mile of our public transit system. Having more people living higher up rather than spread out across our limited land means that our buses can operate more efficiently as they don't have to meander through suburban areas with low ridership. As this is paid for and maintained by the building operator, you could call it a public amenity contribution that makes our whole transit system more cost-effective. We won't be able to get people up cars if we can't run buses efficiently on a very frequent schedule. And building more roads for cars is going to be a lot more expensive for government than letting apartment owners run elevators. Encouraging sprawl in order to deny people the benefit of elevators and living in a central location is the opposite of efficiency. When we talk about DCL waivers, I think we need to remember that low-density housing, mostly detached and duplex homes, pay much lower DCL rates while causing sprawl that is expensive to service and environmentally destructive. That's all I had to say about elevators. In closing, when it comes to vague, alternative proposals, they tend to crop up quite often around the time of public hearings. I encourage you not to assume that the grass is always greener on the other side, but that a vetted proposal in hand is worth two vague sketches in the bush, especially when those alternatives probably won't pencil with the twenty percent moderate-income homes, or may not even be constructible. As for alternate sites, don't worry, we're gonna need those to help for housing too. Thank you for your time, and please approve this lovely, understated, and important little project.
Thanks so much for your time. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm gonna go back to the clerk and see if there's anybody else on the line.
We have one more speaker on the line. However, I'm just gonna ask if there is any other speakers on the line that would like to speak to council. Please press star one on your phone right now. Speaker ending, with phone number ending three-six-five-five, your line is now unmuted.
Thanks, just need your first and last name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver.
Uh, yes, hello, can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Mark Werner. I was a previous caller, number sixty-five, actually, but I had some technical problems with my, with my phone. I lived in Vancouver, Kitsalau for the past twenty years. I lived at the Bridgewater down the block for six years, and I currently live about a block away from the proposed development on Fifth Avenue for the past fifteen years with my wife and two school-aged children. I'd like to state that I'm opposed to this project rezoning application under the MERP program, as it does not meet eligibility criteria. I do support increased density and affordable rental housing in a more conservative and complimentary way with options such as what council has heard presented during the past four evenings of public review. For ideas such as the West Kitsalau Residents Association, we love kits balaklava option. There are three key areas where this project proposal fails to meet the MERP program criteria. First, based on facts of eligibility criteria for MERP, the proposal does not, should not qualify for the program with the project building as proposed by the project developer. Program states eligibility with a maximum of three existing rental units to be considered compared to the existing site has six rental units. Therefore, the proposal should not be eligible by rule as described by speakers such as Sarah Hansen last night, Cameron Zoukou over one week ago. If there's a creative interpretation of this rule, then it's ill-fit at best. Second, there are serious design concerns. While I recognize that the owner of this project and developer have apparently patiently worked together with the city's planners in Vancouver, Kitsalau neighborhood groups and stakeholders on trying to accommodate changes and positive improvements to their building proposal. The fact is that the proposed project is still not compliant with key design criteria, including the massing and scale is too aggressive for the small size of seventy-one feet by one-hundred-and-four feet, i.e. the height, scale, and footprint of the building. It's almost double the permitted height for the zoning in this area. Even after the developer proposed a four, sorry, a three-foot reduction in height, it's still approximately almost twenty meters or sixty feet in height when ten-point-seven meters or thirty-five feet in height is allowed by zoning by law. It's over double the density of what's allowed for armed-for zoning with FSR one-point-four-five to two-point-nine-five increase. As stated by previous callers, the rental cost per square foot is actually going up for the so-called affordable housing option with this new development, resulting in a net loss rather than a net gain. I have concerns with the data of this, for this project that will truly support affordable rental units for families. Third, this project proposal does not comply with the context of neighborhood fit as part of the MERP program criteria for the Kitsalau neighborhood. It's not moving in the right direction in this context to transition properly within the existing neighborhood context, given the lot size relative to the proposed massing and height. There are other brownfield sites, as mentioned in the last meeting, that would be a better fit for building of this heightened-proposed massing. There's no context for other buildings of this scope and scale in Kitsalau on Fourth Avenue, from Alma all the way through to Burrard. Avenue from Alma all the way through to Burrard. I know that the developer is trying to accommodate by offsetting the sixth floor so that the building does not appear as tall at the street level, but this is still five and six stories and 60 feet tall when other buildings are mostly three to four, maximum four stories. I know that the city would like to densify Vancouver neighborhoods, but I would like to request that this be done in a more conservative, complimentary, and tasteful way to existing neighborhoods. If this project is approved, it will set a precedent and slippery slope for other similar future development projects in this neighborhood and will introduce credibility concerns. Lastly, I would urge council to strongly consider supporting an expedited and faster and more efficient process towards a win-win outcome to support a more collaborative approach between the owner, the Millers, the developer, and the neighborhood community, such as the one proposed by the We Love Kits group as a starting point. This would be an interesting pilot to explore improvement opportunities where the MRRP program fails on this project application. Can a four-story building still be in consideration? Can city council support expediting such a proposal to provide a partnership and a win-win solution for both the owner, developer, and neighborhood community? While I'm opposed to this proposal as it exists today and as currently presented to council, I'm in support of building improvements and increasing rental housing stock in this neighborhood by owners such as Mr. Miller. However, I'm not in support by the developer's proposal to build at such an aggressive scale and context relative to all the other buildings in this neighborhood. In the developer's presentation by Mr. Evans, all that was said during the presentation was that lesser heightened density was just not feasible. I'm personally not satisfied by the statement made by Mr. Evans on February 16th. There's a lack of detailed information, missing facts, and evidence to support the statement of claim of not feasible, while a reputable planner and committee group has presented both a feasible and viable alternative option that the neighborhood would be happy with. I'd like to therefore ask the developer to present details regarding the not feasible claim to city council and to the neighborhood groups that are in opposition to this project. I would request that this claim be made transparent, factual, and with data to explain why the Bella Club option cannot be feasible to all stakeholders. I strongly urge city councillors... Yeah, thank you for your time, and I hope that a problem-solving towards a win-win situation and solution can be presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to go back to the clerk, and is there anybody else on the line?
There is not, Mayor Stewart, but I'm just going to ask one more time if there are any additional speakers on the line that want to address council and have not already done so, please press star one now. We have one additional speaker. Speaker ending with phone number 1562, your line is unmuted.
Thanks so much, Speaker. Just if you could state your first and last name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver, we can proceed with your five minutes.
Yes, I am a resident of Vancouver. My name is Dr. Inga Andreen, and I lived at Sixth and Truch for 27 years. I also taught at UBC for 35 years, so had the perspective of seeing the struggle of students looking for rentals on a firsthand basis. Also, be very aware that living, many times we had knocks on our door inquiring what we knew about rentals in the neighborhood. Many of the rentals were underground, like people, everyone had a basement suite. And so the rental market was not one that was posted, and it was a lot word-of-mouth. So yes, Kits needs more rental units. And the sixth-floor development put up by Mr. Miller on the corner of Fourth, close to McDonald, fits into the neighborhood, and I just think it is so needed, and we need to keep Kits diverse, family-oriented, and accessible, and open to projects like this one that's proposed. We had to move, unfortunately, because of our health and needed one level living, which just wasn't available in the neighborhood. But we thoroughly enjoyed living there and just saw the struggles of becoming more dense and people trying to live in the neighborhood in which they were working. And that just wasn't available if you were a teacher, or a fire, or someone, a clerk in a store. You couldn't live in the neighborhood. So that, or the students that I taught, they couldn't, they had to come from a long, long way away. So the idea of them having a rental in downtown Vancouver, that's not very viable. So I am certainly very much in support of this project, so I will close.
Thank you so much for your thoughts tonight. I don't see any questions for you, but really appreciate you participating. Thank you, and I'll go back to the clerks. Is there anybody else on the line?
There are no further speakers on the line, Mayor Stewart.
Thanks so much. So we're going to close the speakers list since there were fewer public comments received after 5:00 p.m. today. Sorry, yes, so yes, we're going to close the received public comments, move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions of staff and to make a decision. Just going to check with the clerk that the applicant is available and would be available to make closing comments.
Hello?
We can hear you? Hello? Clerks, can we have...
Yes, Mayor Stewart, my understanding is that is Peter Miller.
Okay.
And he may wish to make closing comments. Peter Miller, are you there?
It does show that Peter Miller's phone is muted.
Mayor Stewart, he is going to need to unmute that himself.
That's right, okay. There we go, I see the mute coming off.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Peter Miller. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
If city council wants MRRP projects throughout the city, they must accept projects of this size and scope. This MRRP with 20% of FSR space and eight of 35 units as moderate-income rental units appealing to incomes of $30,000 to $80,000 will only work with this size of development. The numbers do not lie. A six-story, 35-unit, purpose-built rental that complies with city zoning policy, or you have the option of a four-story condo project and the city loses 27 rental units. Any other building combinations, the numbers do not work, and they do not comply with city zoning policy. Our objectives in 1971 was to purchase a small, purpose-built rental project. We purchased two small duplexes on one lot at Fourth and Bella Clava. Six years later, we purchased the adjacent lot on Fourth Avenue and converted it to a duplex. In 2021, 50 years later, our objectives are still the same, but this time it is to build a new, purpose-built rental building on the same two underutilized sites in Kitsellano. We, in '82 and '83, are a classic long-term mom-and-pop operation. We are not a developer, nor are we a REIT. We are a long-term mom-and-pop operation. The community requires new, purpose-built rental units as the city evolves over the years. I've heard tonight there's been very little built in Kitsellano in the last 50 years. We can only work with the planners, and the planners can only work with city council planning policies. Over the last eight years or so, we could not get a new, purpose-built rental project accepted by the planners because of, one, the Rental 100 program, or, two, the Rate of Change Guidelines, or, three, the Rental Stock Official Development Program, and, four, we sent a proposal as part of the interim rezoning policy and it was refused. The only option for us to build a new, purpose-built rental building on this underutilized development site on this major arterial in Kitsellano was the MRRP program. We applied for and were accepted to the MRRP program. The plan before you meets the city's planning objectives for MRRP programs, and it meets our objectives. We recommend you approve this MRRP program this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other comments from your team?
Mayor Stewart, it's James Evans, could I speak for a moment?
Please do. This is your time to speak, and again, there are no questions at this stage in the process from council, so these will be your final words. We do have questions, we can ask the staff though, so please go ahead.
Thank you for allowing me to provide some concluding remarks. Numerous speakers have spoken over the past few evenings expecting a wide, expressing a wide variety of opinions about the proposal, ranging from those who are passionately opposed to those who are strongly supportive and a whole range of options in between. The amount of attention this proposal has generated is really quite astonishing. Even other levels of government have chimed in. I was personally contacted by David Eby, the local MLA and Attorney General, about two and a half weeks ago to voice his support for the need to provide more affordable rental housing in Kitsellano. I also understand that Joyce Murray, the local MP, has also taken an interest in the project. As I listened to all the speakers, I wanted to circle back on a few common themes that have emerged. Nobody suggested that we don't need more rental housing, and nobody is opposed to the notion of redeveloping the site for rental housing. In my opening remarks, I presented a rental survey encompassing the northwest area of Kits. It was noteworthy that only 5% of the housing stock in that area that I surveyed was purpose-built rental. Some speakers challenged the accuracy of the survey that I did, and I'll be the first to admit that while there may be more purpose-built rental than was shown, even if I underestimated the number of rentals by 100% in my survey, that would still mean that only 10% of the housing stock is purpose-built rental in that local neighborhood. The point I was trying to convey is that in a city where over 50% of the residents are tenants, this neighborhood desperately needs more rental. There's a serious inequity here. The primary concern that arose time after time through the course of these past few evenings has been the size of the building. It's too big, it's too tall. An alternative option, the Bella Clava option, was put forward and is an acceptable alternative by some members of the neighborhood for discussion. So I think it's important to step back for a moment, remind everyone of how we got to this point. The Millers are longtime owners of the site, who just spoke a moment ago, and seeking to redevelop the property now with a new rental building for eight years. Up until roughly two years ago, there were no options available to them. When the Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Program was adopted by council, they were invited to apply and were accepted as one of the pilot projects. In order to accommodate the social policy objectives of the Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Program, that being the provision of affordable rental units, the built form by necessity has to be larger than the buildings that would typically be developed under an existing zone. Consequently, when they land in a neighborhood, whether it's Kits, Garystow, Kitsellano, or any other neighborhood, they are typically met with dismay by local residents and are generally met with a lot of opposition. This isn't the first MRRP proposal to generate a lot of opposition, and it probably won't be the last. I think it's incumbent on council to understand the lessons that are being learned and to make changes to the policy in the future. That's after all why this is a pilot program. But for heaven's sakes, don't blame the applicant, who in good faith has done everything that's been asked of him by city staff. They paid the $60,000 admission fee, which is the current cost to submit a rezoning application, and over the past two years have followed the utterly Byzantine labyrinth set out by the city to get to this point. In addition to all of the rezoning application fee, they've spent considerable additional time and money to assemble all the material requested of them by city staff. This proposal has been carefully vetted by city staff, who have confirmed that it meets all the requirements of the policy. The product of all the work is what you see before you now to consider. I'd like to also clarify that there are no other rental options available for the site because there are presently no other council policies that would enable staff to consider redevelopment of this site. As I noted in my opening remarks that were echoed by a number of speakers, I did meet with the Kits Residents Association, We Love Kits, and other individuals, both at open houses during the application stage and also individually in an effort to try and bridge the gap between the expectations of area residents and the requirements set forth in the MRRP program. Last summer, we kicked around a few ideas, and late last year, Scott Hine, a former city planner, drew up a plan that contemplated the less-tense form of development that's been put forward as the Bella Clava option. I was quite happy to work with Scott Hine because I sat across the table from him years ago when he worked for the city, and I know that he understands the process and wants to facilitate solutions where possible. It was my genuine hope that we could arrive at a form of development that was both economically viable and acceptable to all. But unfortunately, the Bella Clava option and other variants thereof were dead on arrival of the city because they do not conform to the MRRP policy. There is presently no other policy basis to consider other options. The staff have noticed previously the site is part of the rental ODP and is therefore not eligible to be considered under Rental 100 or any other rental policies in the current policy toolbox that they have. That's why I was encouraged to stay the course with the proposal that's in front of you this evening. To be clear, if council wants purpose-built rental on this site, there is no Plan B. The only other viable option would be to redevelop the site under the existing RM4 zone. That would result in a four-story building substantially similar to other buildings in the area with market condos and rentals to replace the six existing rentals units on site. It would simply be processed as a DP under the conditional use provisions of the RM4 zone. There'd be no public conversation, no public hearing. In fact, it's unlikely the council would even be aware of it. And while that may be more pleasing to the local neighborhood, it would mean the permanent loss of the opportunity to add an additional 29 units of secure rental, including permanently affordable rental in a neighborhood that's desperately short of rentals. Vancouver is desperately short of rental housing everywhere and in every neighborhood. Everyone knows of the campers in their tents living on the streets, in parks, under overpasses and the like, as well as people living in their camper vans on city streets because they cannot find affordable housing options in the city. Last time I was driving along Fourth Avenue just west of the site, I observed a number of camper vans parked along Fourth Avenue in front of Jericho Park. That situation is hardly unique. Voting to support this project will not result in the world coming to an end. When you get up tomorrow morning, I'm quite sure the sun will still rise in the morning and will still set in the evening. Truthfully, I don't envy the position that you're in. There's a group of passionate local residents who are vehemently opposed to the project versus the broader rental community who would like to have more options but are presently precluded from the neighborhood owing to the lack of rental options. One group is going to be disappointed in the outcome. But now the conversation's come to an end. The actors have all had an opportunity to speak and have now left the stage. The time's come for council to debate the proposal and render a decision. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and that's it from your team?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Right, sorry, one second here. Okay, staff, have any closing comments? Staff?
Hi there, it's Carly Rosenbach, can you hear me?
Yes, again, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. First off, we'd like to thank all the speakers for contributing throughout this rezoning and engaging at the public hearing. As James noted, we did hear a lot of passion for how great this neighborhood is with all the amenities that there are in the area, and that affordable housing is important here. So we'd like to clarify that there is no Bella Clava option that's been brought forward, and we're here tonight to go over the application that's here before you. And so we'd like to clarify that it does, there are, we have heard that form of development is a concern from some members of the neighborhood, and I'd like to point out that in Appendix B, there are conditions to secure ways to make it more compatible with the area. There's conditions for increased landscaping, a high quality of materials to be used, and conditions to provide increased residential character. Thank you very much, and this concludes staff's closing comments.
Thanks so much. Counselor Harwick, do you have a question for staff?
I do have a question, I have a couple of questions for staff. But the first one, I'd like to direct to Dan Garrison in Housing Policy.
I'll let, just directed to staff, and I don't know who's on the line, so if you ask the question, they'll have to distribute it as...
Well, I saw Mr. Garrison was on the line, so it is my understanding in a rezoning that council can waive or deviate from a council policy or guideline if there is a public interest in doing so. Is that correct?
I'll send it to staff.
My clock's ticking.
I'm not sure if that's a better question for me, Counselor, Stan Garrison from Housing Policy, or perhaps for Yardley or Theresa O'Donnell on the technical aspects of the rezoning process.
Well, you've been the key person that we've dealt with on the housing file, so...
Sure, I mean, you know, I can say, like, yeah, council, that has been our approach to these, is council can choose to work differently on that, but I understand Theresa O'Donnell is ready to respond.
Okay, well, just to elaborate, in this case, the community in collaboration with the developer... Okay, well, just to elaborate, in this case, the community in collaboration with the developer had been working on a secured rental project for this site, as we've heard described multiple times. This option appears to have the potential for meeting of the MRRP conditions of providing 100% secured rental with 20% floor area for below-market rental, but more analysis is needed. So if this is the case and MRRP units can be included, would it then fit in the same policy door as the option before us tonight?
Staff?
Well, I'll respond. Counselwoman Hardwick.
I don't know if you can say councilwoman anymore, but.
Counselor, it is.
You're right, I'm sorry. Counselor, yes, thank you. Thank you for the question. Just to be clear, we don't have a balaclava option under consideration.
I'm not asking that question. I would ask the question, what guidelines or policy would need to be waived for council to consider the project on a secure rental project only without MRRP below-market units? I mean, there's clearly, and we've sat through many of these things, we keep moving the goalposts. Can we not move them again?
So Dan Garrison, I can respond to the piece about the secured rental policy and rental 100 aspect of it. The reason why, over the years and over those years, I've met with Mr. Miller on several occasions to discuss a rental 100 option, the reason why that that's not a policy door that we can use to rezone the site is because the rental housing stock ODP applies to this area, and those are rate-of-change protected rental units. And the rental 100 or secured rental policy for the site prohibits rezoning for sites that include rate-of-change protected or rental housing stock ODP protected rental properties.
Well, except for when we're changing. So here's an example. I see on the table in Section 3G of the MRRP guidelines on Page Six, there are additional considerations to evaluate consistency with the MRRP program. And it says, quote, "That projects must consider and respect transitions to surrounding areas and homes." I see the word "must" is used, which is a strong, unambiguous language in a policy statement. And yet, we seem to be able to deviate from that. So again, we seem to be able to change the rules on a case-by-case basis. Are we not able to make some changes? I mean, we are doing it, so there seems to be a path forward here, is my point. Can we not consider some more movement on this?
Staff?
We are proposing a MRRP, I understand.
Counselor Hardwick, this is Teresa O'Donnell again. I think what Dan was laying out for the council is correct. I certainly agree with that. One thing I'd like to highlight, though, is.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to interrupt for one second. I would like to ask for another round of questions as I'm running out of time. Can I move for another round of questions, please?
You can. Have you have a motion in the second round?
Second.
Thanks. Well, the yeas and nays, all in favor, yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nay. Okay, so there's a second round of questions, and you're just at the end of this round.
I'll yield my time, thanks.
Two seconds over to you, Counselor Domino, up to five minutes.
Mayor, I'm on for a point of personal privilege.
Okay.
Just to note that I did miss the first 10 to 15 minutes of the meeting, and so I will either need time to review or I will not be able to deliberate and vote on the item this evening. So I just want to flag that early on, and I think it's about 10 to 15 minutes I have to review.
Okay, thanks. I've been told there's an amendment that's coming that is not kind of the usual amendment, so we'll have to get the law to review that. So that could take approximately 15 minutes and that, hopefully, that those overlap. But we'll see if the motion gets moved first, and if it doesn't, then you could request a recess.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Carr, up to five minutes for questions.
Yes, thanks. My questions, first of all, are that some of the speakers stated that the application doesn't meet the MRRP criteria, so I'm just wanting a response back on that. How are you, a staff, interpreting the notion of neighborhood fit and locational considerations, which are considered as key criteria in the guidelines?
Thank you for your question. We're going to turn it over to Dan Garrison for a response.
Maybe Mr. Garrison, sorry, Dan Garrison is muted.
Somebody on mute there?
Hi, everyone. This is Paul Chang, Senior Development Planner. I think I'll start off with trying to answer that question. I think, first of all, the MRRP policy itself does identify certain areas where a MRRP rezoning could be considered. For this one, it does occur on an arterial intersection, and so it qualifies as such to be considered for a MRRP. In terms of neighborhood fit, I think there are lots of different criteria that we have to consider. However, for this particular project, I think we start off with the idea that it is on an arterial. The arterial itself is a street that is greater in width than, say, a residential street within the area. So because of its width, there is a consideration for greater height because from just from a consideration of the width of the street in ratio to the height of the buildings, the width of the street that is greater actually allows for a certain greater height for buildings that, from an urban design standpoint, we feel that is something that does not affect the public realm in an overly negative manner. So those are some of the considerations that we would have, for sure. Other considerations are, of course, how the development would affect some of the more private properties nearby. And that is something that we've put in the report with respect to our analysis as well. Shadows, also overlook and privacy. And although we can be certain that this building, which is taller, will actually create more shadow and privacy and overlook more than, say, something that comes under zoning, the thinking behind this is that it isn't necessarily an undue overage.
Okay, well, I won't ask you to define undue. One speaker suggested that the MRRP policy says that there can only be a maximum of three existing tenants. I couldn't find that, but can you respond to that statement?
I can respond to that. Counselor Carr, Stan Garrison, Housing Policy. Yeah, so the policy does speak to, and this was part of the memo that was sent to council, that for qualifying in the RM zone, as you know, previously, we had had in our rental 100 policy, we had actually prohibited rezonings in these areas with rental housing on them. When we brought in the moderate income rental pilot, we did consider and council-approved consideration of rezonings in these RM zones that are protected by the rental housing stock ODP because of the affordability that's embedded. But we wanted to ensure that only sort of underutilized sites and not sort of larger purpose-built rental buildings were eligible for that. And so we included new wording around that, and in fact, council amended it to include wording around sites where with buildings with fewer than three units were present. And so that's where the policy, it's not about the entire site, it's about the buildings. So this site has a total of six units, but they are in three duplexes. And so none of the individual buildings are multiple dwellings. Therefore, it meets the policy. And the intent of that was really to enable consideration of rezoning on underutilized sites and really protect more purpose-built rental in this process.
Great.
And that's the five minutes?
Yes, I see that. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Frye, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks for the work that's gone into this. I just want to zero in a little bit on a couple of items. Number one, the tenant relocation policy. I note there was over a dozen tenants. Are we, do we have any, are we satisfied with the TRP as it's going to be applied in this case? And are folks being well-accommodated?
Good evening, Counselor Fy. This is Angel Clark. I'm the housing planner working on this project. So of the six units that are currently on site, five of those are eligible for compensation under the TRPP tenant relocation line. However, the applicant has committed to offering all tenant, current tenants, which includes 13 folks, named on the leases, the first right of refusal at either a 20% discount of starting rents for a market unit or if they qualify for a moderate income unit, they would receive a moderate income unit.
Okay, thank you for that. I think that's an important highlight. I'm wondering, just to the broader process, I mean, I appreciate that there's been a lot of time in this public hearing and a lot of work from staff and a lot of work from members of the community who've come to speak. You know, we heard pretty clearly from Mr. Miller and Mr. Evans the model and the sort of follow-up and issues around the balaclava model. And similarly, we heard from Teresa O'Donnell and Dan Garrison about the pro formas and how this is going to work. But we heard such a radically different story from members of the community who had spoken in good faith about this balaclava model and its ability to deliver MRRP and et cetera. And there's obviously a massive disconnect, and I'm wondering if there's, if we have any analysis of what's going on here that we would have such a wild disconnection between these two positions? And if there's something we can do to mitigate this in the future so that we're not spending three days on a public hearing with such varying perspectives?
Thank you, Counselor Frye. This is Teresa. We've never received a balaclava model. We don't have a balaclava model. Nothing has been submitted to staff. We don't really, we learned what we heard from the speakers, but there has never been a submission to staff.
Okay, well, I appreciate that clarification, and I can appreciate that that's been a curveball for you as much as this question was, so thank you. Thanks for the work on this.
Thanks. Counselor Domino, questions?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I want to just follow up on Mr. Garrison's just elaboration on the MRRP and consideration for underutilized sites. Mr. Garrison, when you were talking about protecting purpose-built units, it was, this was so to ensure that we wouldn't see like teardowns of, you know, three-story walk-ups that were perfectly usable and still had some life in them. Could you just expand on that?
Yes, Counselor, thanks for the question. That's the general intent. There are a number of walk-ups in the RM districts that are quite small, that are in, you know, 6, 8, 10-unit range. The reason we landed on a three-unit number is three units is a pretty regular dividing line we use. It's a threshold number in the rental housing stock ODP itself. It's also the line in the zoning bylaw that separates a dwelling, multiple dwelling building from a one- and two-family dwelling building. So it's a pretty standard threshold, but it's generally that we wanted to protect those larger buildings and take a cautious approach in the pilot project to the redevelopment or rezoning of existing rental properties.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. I also want to follow up on the line of questions around process. And specifically, I heard on, I think it was a number of residents, we've already sort of covered on whether this proposal fits policy or not, but there was questions around the direction that staff may have given the applicant and the developer. And I'd heard variations of that, and I'm just wondering if staff could explain how the conversations and dial that may have taken place between them and the applicant?
Thank you for your question. So staff did follow all of the city procedures in terms of meeting our consultation process. There was no direction to stop consultation at any point during this rezoning application.
So I guess, maybe I'll step this back. It would be fair to say then that staff just followed our regular procedures of engaging with the applicant? Because I heard nuanced comments from neighbors, from residents about what they believe took place in terms of those conversations. And I'm imagining most of them were not privy to those, but I'm just trying to understand the process side. Not just the consultation, but the policy discussions with the applicant.
Counselor Domino, yes, we follow a very standard procedure. In fact, we did encourage the applicant to meet with the neighborhood. We, at no time, well, we never discouraged the applicant, discouraged the applicant from looking at alternatives. We may have suggested that there's no other policy door. I'm sure we did that. But we did not discourage the applicant from exploring alternatives with the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And maybe, actually, I'm going to pause there and maybe I'll participate in the second round of questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kirby Young?
Thanks. I don't think I'll take that long. A number of my questions were asked with respect to clarifying if this qualified with having six units housing 13 individuals in three buildings. Also, sort of around the process, Counselor Domino just touched on that with respect to sort of perhaps discrepancy in how that was conveyed by different parties. So I appreciate that. Maybe I can ask a different question. This building or these buildings, I understand, were built in 1942, which means they're about 79 years old. In sort of the process, and I don't know, I know we can't ask questions of the applicant anymore, but in the process, are staff aware? Or can you comment on sort of the general lifespan of a building like this, i.e. if this doesn't move forward at this time? What's the general state of those buildings? Did that come up in this processing of this application?
Hi, Counselor. Thank you for your question. So the building was largely renovated in the 1970s. And we understand from the property owner and applicant that they're looking to redevelop in part because of the state of the current building.
Can you elaborate when you say the state of the current buildings, meaning?
These are old buildings, and my understanding is that they haven't had much reinvestment at this point in time.
Could they stand for another period of time, or are they getting to end of life, I guess, trying to maybe get a bit more explicit there?
We're unsure. We'd have to check with the property owner.
Okay, and in terms of the rents, there was, from one of the speakers had indicated that the current units provided a reasonable level of affordability. And I believe one speaker stated that a three-bedroom, for example, was 1,700. And in my review of the proposed MRRP units for the eight proposed moderate income, a three-bedroom would be 2,000. Is that right? So just about a $300 difference?
Yes, this is Angel, the housing planner. A three-bedroom moderate income unit is $2,000, and a two-bedroom is $1,600.
Okay. Okay, and following up on the tenant question earlier, we don't know at this point if the existing tenants generally are of moderate income and need those units, or if they're just fortunate that they've had a great landlord that has provided them with reasonable rent for a long period of time. Is that right?
Yeah, I can't comment on the incomes of those existing tenants. However, the rents in the existing units do range from 1,528 to 1,711 per month.
Okay. Okay, thanks. I will leave it there for now.
Thanks. Counselor Weave, up to five minutes.
Hi, my first question is on the 15-foot setback for the three-seater trees. Recognizing this is a small lot, do we think it's engineered? Like, is it feasible to have a parcade with that setback? And is there any contemplation that that might not be feasible?
Good evening, Mayor and Counselor. My name is Brenda Clark. I'm the development planner on this proposal. There are extensive rezoning conditions regarding the existing. There, there are extensive rezoning conditions regarding the existing trees. Because there have been some specific questions, I will just read out what the condition is. Design development to ensure the feasibility of the retention of the three-city trees at the northeast corner by provision of further assurances by the arborist and discussion of the methods of protection, including an increased 4.6-meter or 15-foot setback to the parcade wall. Note to applicant, retention of the three-seater trees provides scale, enhances the public realm, and represents an important neighborhood natural amenity. Assurances that this is feasible should be provided by the arborist. Changes to the parcade will be required. So in other words, we are aware it's a very important issue, and it is a technical thing that requires a resolution at the development permit stage.
Okay. And we think that even with the small footprint of the building, that will be feasible from our preliminary review?
Yes, thank you. There are requirements to satisfy the park board as they are city trees.
Okay, thank you. The second one is, we're hearing a lot about neighborhood fit and design. And I'm just wondering, to allow, I guess, talk to councilors and the public, what changes in design can be made from this stage until the building stage, till the building permit? Can we see design changes in material color, right? Can we, can you just explain a little bit more of what can change from here on, recognizing that design was something that was brought up significantly by the community?
Thank you for your question. Again, the rezoning conditions go into great detail on how to improve the design. Rezoning condition number 1.2 requires a more sensitive approach to relate to the neighborhood character, which is based on a layered design, otherwise known as a tripartite design, where the building is developed with a base, a middle, and a top, looking at the window proportions and details, the facade articulation, incorporating individual entries for the ground units and quality materials. So in other words, the proposal for development has much room to move to be improved and to be compatible with the area. The urban design panel supported the project, but stated that architectural excellence was needed to better integrate a taller building or a new typology into Quetzalcoatlano, and that the effort should focus on giving a human scale to the six-story building and developing an architectural character suitable to Quetzalcoatlano, which is notably a pedestrian-friendly historic area. So the use of high-quality materials such as masonry and brick, horizontal siding and trims are very important to relate to the nearby character buildings and to repeat their rich play of light and shadow at a fine-grained scale. Also, the landscaping, including the trees, shrubs, and lush plantings, are important to blend into the area.
Okay, thank you. And another one, obviously, this council's past work on corner stores and recognizing the mix of retail up and down this area. Was the proponent or staff looked at any point that this could be an opportunity for commercial space, recognizing there's commercial on this block already?
Thank you for that question. It was only applied as a residential use, since that's what's been evaluated.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thanks. So we're on our second round now. Councilor Carr, up to five?
Right, thank you. My first question is, is around, again, sort of neighborhood fit and setbacks is part of that. I noticed that the urban design panel said that there were inadequate, they felt inadequate setbacks on the lane. What's been the response to that?
Steph?
Thank you, Councilor. This is Brenda again. The, the setback along the south is, in fact, only reduced by three feet. And the reason for that is because it was intending to preserve the existing mature trees along the north. What has happened to improve the south setback is the proposal originally involved having the garbage and recycling along the lane. So that has been located underground, relocated underground. And the lane will now be developed just with landscaping. There is...
That sounds good. I just needed to get that. Sorry, I've got a few questions, but thanks. Yeah, thank you. That, that makes sense. Shadow studies, one of the speakers said that it's just from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and the impact is well beyond those hours. So do you have any comments about that?
Thank you for your question. The, the building is located on the southeast corner of the intersection. For the most part, the shadows don't impact the sidewalks on the north side of West Fourth Avenue. The, there, there is some impact in the late evening, or late afternoon and evening to the project to the east, the Santa Barbara apartment building. However, because the sun is low in the sky, even a four-story building will cause the same shadow. So it's, it's an unfortunate reality of putting a building between...
I think that, that, thank you for that information about the four stories. Appreciate that, too. Does the MERP program consider, in terms of affordability, anything around, and rental housing, any consideration of net increase? So how do we deal with, for example, affordability comparisons when we have units that are being, would be replaced, that are very affordable? And how do we bring in size into that, especially when the MERP projects are supposed to be geared to family housing?
Hi, Councilor Dan Garrison. Thanks for the question. It is, in the MERP program, we do particularly, we, we have a family unit mix, and we, we require that the building be mixed, and we require that the below-market units be given a spread across those mixes. That's, that's how we generally deal with that. We have, we're new to, and this is really one of the early projects where we are looking at replacement of existing, particularly rental housing stock ODP-protected rental units. So we're looking at this and learning about how that goes. So I'm not sure I would say there is a standard policy approach to how we, we do it, because we haven't done it that often. But we are learning about that. And we are looking at the, through the tenant relocation plan, supporting the residents that are there now and giving them options in the new building, either at a 20% discount to market or in the MERP units if they qualify. So that's our approach. There's certainly more work to do and learning about this, but that's our approach to do, to the, through the pilot program.
Thank you. That's clear. My final question is around the quote "Balaclava" proposal. And I heard clearly from staff that there is just no ability to receive that kind of proposal. So if this is something innovative that comes forward from the community with the actual developer was, was interested to, what is the, what's the remedy for, for not having current policy on that? What, what do you as staff, or could you as staff, or we as council do to enable something innovative that comes from, from the community to proceed? Councilor Carr, this is Teresa. I'll, I'll take a little bit of a stab at that. We, we do try to be flexible with these applications. We do, we do try to be creative and inventive and get the best project forward. Here we have a couple of different things at play. We've got the MERP, and as been discussed, we can vary from different aspects of council policy. But we also have an ODP. We have the rental housing stock ODP, which is a bylaw and has the weight of law, and that, the staff does not have the ability to vary. So this one's really, really juggling between those two different policy documents.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
Great. I'm going to carry along that line of questioning with Ms. O'Donnell. So again, it's my understanding in a rezoning that council can waive or deviate from a council policy or guideline if there's public interest in doing so. Is that correct?
From a, for a policy, yes, yes, ma'am, but not from an ODP.
Great.
Right. But in this case, and MERP units can be included, why would it not fit through the same policy door as the one before us tonight? I mean, I guess the answer is you haven't seen it yet. Are you aware of the reputations of Scott Hine and Christina DiMarco, who have been proponents of the Balaclava model, as it's been described?
Yes, yeah, yes, I am.
Right. So you know that they're very senior and esteemed members of the urban design and planning communities in the city? I presume, yes. I don't know if you can say ma'am now either. So would, you know, given that, and the, given the ability to be, you know, move, creating some flexibility when there's an interest in doing so, there's innovation. We've got people with serious reputations and knowledge here that are saying that there is an opportunity here. Why would you not be embracing that? And why would this council not be embracing it?
That application is not before the city council today.
Okay, well, that's a good answer, and that will lead into the motion that I'm going to bring forward in just a minute. But I'd like to go back to the neighborhood fit discussion. One of the staff members talked about the fact that Fourth Avenue was an arterial. Now, this is at the corner of Balaclava. This is not an arterial intersection. Is that correct?
Thank you for that question. It's, Fourth, West Fourth is an arterial, and Balaclava is a secondary street.
Okay, thanks. It's a secondary street. And is it not true that it has a narrow alley with bungalows behind?
I can answer that. It's Paul Chang again. It is behind, to the south of this particular site is a 20-foot lane, which is a standard lane. And then to the south of that are, are houses or duplexes. The particular area is zoned for duplexes or houses. And I'll just want to add furthermore, within the MERP policy, there have been a pretty consistent type of transitions that we've seen from larger buildings that the MERPs are proposing to the single-family house or duplex zones directly due south of the lane. East Hastings ones, for instance, had 14-story buildings.
Okay, so how do you reconcile, on the one hand, you're saying that we are conscious of neighborhood fit, and on the other hand, you're saying that, oh, but except for when we're not?
I think, I think we're conscious of neighborhood fit. However, what we're also conscious of is that the neighborhood fit's going to change. And this MERP policy does actually propose that. There, each MERP building is going to actually stretch that, 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 that kind of comfort level to a certain extent for some of our homeowners citizens.
Okay, well, Mr. Chang, with all due respect, it says very clearly in the policy that the projects must, not might, must consider and respect transitions to surrounding areas and homes. And I see that word "must" is being used, which is very strong and unambiguous. How do you reconcile that?
I think that it is nevertheless a subjective decision, though, isn't it? In terms of transition, council has decided that a 14-story building transitioning to a single-family zone has been acceptable. So if it's okay for East Hastings, I think council must ask itself then, is it okay for a six-story building to transition to a duplex zone in this area?
Well, I guess then council also has to ask themselves if there's any point having policies at all. And so, again, what policies then are we going, now, I'm up, I'm, I have a motion that I have to get out right now.
But you can't, because Councilor Boyle has the floor for questions. Go ahead, Councilor Boyle.
I'm actually, Mayor, seeing as there aren't other people on the list, I'm prepared to move the recommendations from staff.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a second, or? Second, or anybody?
Right.
Thank you. Okay, so we're on the main queue now. Council, we are at 9:45. Just to let you know, we have 15 minutes left after a very long day, but I'll just put that out there. And we've got Councilor Dominado. Just one second. I have a point of privilege first, everybody. Go ahead, Councilor Dejanova.
No. Thanks, but, Mayor Stewart, I won't be able to stay past 10:00 PM this evening, and I'm not sure what the proper procedure and protocol would be to complete debate and decision, if it would be on another night or his unfinished business at the next council meeting. But I would like to move that when the time's appropriate, if possible.
Sure. Maybe this is a good time to explain to everybody where we're at in this process. We, we've had the motion moved and seconded. We have a list of folks for the debate and decision. I understand there is a, an amendment that's proposed. There has been a request for time to both review the, the legal aspect of the motion as well as some time to review the, some, Councilor Dominado needs to review about 15 minutes of tape. So for me, I'm wondering if this is just a good place to pause, where I, I don't really think we're, we're going to get through this. There, there is some, you know, we're almost at 10. So I suggest that we can just recess, and what we would do is reconvene on March 2nd, Tuesday, March 2nd. I'm just going to make sure I'm right with the clerks here. Tuesday, March 2nd at, I believe, at 6:00 PM.
Kind of procedure. Can I do that, Mr. Mayor?
Yep. So I'm just putting it out there. That's my suggestion. But yes, you can ask a point of procedure.
I'm wondering if, instead of reconvening everybody on the amount of staff time that that takes on one item, if this could be referred for debate and decision to the March 9th council meeting versus having a separate meeting just to complete that?
I believe talking to the clerks, there was a problem with that.
Mayor Stewart, it is the, yes, it is the clerk here. The, the main problem with the, moving it to the March 9th meeting is that meeting is completely filled with agenda items.
How about March 10th, point of information to you?
It has to be to a regular council meeting.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to be efficient and avoid the...
Oh, I get you.
Staff time and another council.
I, I'm just looking at the list. We've got four, four councilors on for up to five minutes each. So that's 20 minutes plus the review. So March 2nd, it has been set aside in calendars as a council reserve. So that, that's what I would suggest, is we, we recess at this point and reconvene March 2nd at 6:00 PM.
Mayor Stewart, Mayor Stewart, it, it, it is the clerk here. I'm terribly sorry. We do have a reserve available for tomorrow at 6:00 PM.
Right.
So it, it, it could, the decision, the debate could go to tomorrow at 6:00 PM, which is...
I am getting a note, another note, clerks, that you may want to check yourself. So what I'm, the note I'm getting is, is March 2nd. Sorry, March, March 2nd at 6:00 PM.
Okay. It is council's choice. I had understood that tomorrow at 6:00 is also available.
I just have another, sorry, I'm getting a note from, from the deputy clerk.
The acting, the acting city clerk?
That's right, I am.
Okay.
That it, it is, it is March.
March 2nd.
2nd.
Okay.
So can I have a motion for that? Okay, thanks. Councilor Dejanova, I have a motion. Do I have a second for the recess? Okay, thanks. All in favor, say yay.
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 Oppose, oppose nay. Great. Thanks so much, everybody. We're recessed for this evening?
Yeah, just a, yeah, just a point of information. I'm wondering, we do have a reserve tomorrow. Can I just get the clerk to let me know, or let us know if that reserve is being used, or if that's the reserve for Thursday? The 25th is now being canceled.
I'm going to have to get the clerk to update the schedule via email. I'm going to have to get the clerk to update the schedule via email, because we're, we have recessed the meeting. So, so I'll get the clerks to send a note around just to, to give us the remainder of the schedule.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
We've got a busy week with the metro.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Thanks, everybody. Good night. Thanks to staff and all who participated tonight.
Yes, thank you, staff. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel.
Everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.